Yeah, I mean it's just beyond.
This is the camellia?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Our first. This is the.
Because some of the guys are working in there.
Yeah.
Turned out, turned out.
Oh, those hopeless people. They're breaking, they're breaking, stay the hell. No one, no one lives anymore. Oh, she's, she's mentally gone and her family don't.
I remember these the walk.
No, she's been. They're all but Grant like Russ and her son with their daughter and stuff and they. They don't keep up the house, they only keep up the house when the code thing is. Oh, they, they tried to hold the field trash for the last. And all they did was board it up, I don't even think they fixed it, but. And they had a coil in the middle of the living room. It was just the living, it was just the middle of the living.
Facing your pen.
Huh?
Yeah.
Oh, I saw. No.
But, you know, I'm gonna go.
Don't tell me. Don't go look at ours at the end of the day either before the, before the janitor or crew get in. Don't look at our city.
Yeah.
You know how the people are.
I'm calling to order the regularization meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpin Springs on Tuesday, August seventeen, two thousand seventeen to six thirty P M. Roll call, please.
Mayor LaHusus?
Here.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Here.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Commissioner Kikta?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Chaplin Akori from Florida Hospital of North Pinellas and Tarpin Springs. If you please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray, Holy One. I ask for your blessings upon our city, commissioners, and all of those representing our community here this evening. Encourage and guide them, giving them the wisdom they need to lead, protect, and enrich our beautiful city. Help them to have courage and faith in you always, no matter what they face day to day. Thank you for hearing our prayer in your name, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, welcome, and thank you for being here tonight. We go to the public comments of the items that will not be discussed tonight. If you have any comments, please come forward.
Good evening, Peter Delax, five one four Ashland Avenue. Didn't get a chance to be here at the last meeting to say what I want to say, which I felt would have been more appropriate at the time. But it wasn't but more than a year and a half, two years ago that I stood up here and we talked about the Pulse nightclub killing. Now we have Vegas to mourn. Senseless acts of violence continue to affect us. So first off, I want to pray and say thank you, God, for sparing those who did and all those who valiantly risked their own lives to help others. Thank you. But today I was wanting to speak about something different, and it's kind of tied to the gun thing. After that gun thing, they were saying, oh, well, now's not the right time to talk about guns and gun control and everybody's saying we got to protect the Second Amendment and all that stuff. But let's remember, that's the Second Amendment. What about the First? That was the first one that was put on there, freedom of press, freedom of religion, freedom to express, to be able to vocalize. That is really what keeps us on track. And having lived through Kennedy and Nixon and Ford and Bushes and all these years. As many times as we've maybe had issues with our presidency. None of them have been this vehemently about the press. And it's an attack on the part of the institution of our government that is actually written in there to be a part. And I'm concerned that we're going down a trail that we have less valid information to us and so much other things thrown at us that aren't. So I would say at this point, I would like to see more of our leaders standing up for the freedom of the press. And an example of that is coming up later this week. My daughter goes to Gainesville and Mr. Spencer's gonna be there, as you've read, Scott has issued an emergency order to have resources on hand. And to be honest with you, I hope it is peaceful. I know it's gonna draw people from both sides of the crowd, but to be honest with you, that's what our colleges are for, to have different opinions. We may disagree with it, we don't have to get violent about it just because they have that opinion. And what we need to do is find ways to soften those edges. And to me, the only way to do that is to make sure everybody has an ability to be educated and see the other side and try to find some empathy and some kindness so we don't explode into a Jefferson or, I mean Ferguson or Charlottesville or something of that nature, because we don't need that. We're better than that. And may God bless, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delax. Any other public comments? You know, we go into the proclamation, item number one A, proclamation on Ohi Day. The City of Tarpin Springs, Florida proclamation would ask, Ohi Day also referred as the No Day. It's an important part of the Greek history and it's also celebrated as a holiday each year. This day, which follows on October twenty eighth each year, honors the anniversary of Greek refusal to surrender to Mussolini's Italian fascist government. And whereas the historic statement Ohi, which means knowing in Greek, play a pivotal role in the ultimate victory of the Allied forces in the World War Two. And whereas Ohi Day is an inspiration to those who cherish democracy and freedom. And whereas the Greeks faithfully met their obligation and their allies and their country with courage, self-sacrifice, determination, and dedication. And whereas the City of Tarpin Springs celebrates Ohi Day in honor of the public heroes, men and women, who fought for the free Greek nation. And now therefore, I Chris LaHusus, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tarpin Springs, to hereby proclaim October twenty eighth, two thousand seventeen as Ohi Day. Mr. Sisow is not here, I guess we're gonna mail that. Thank you. Are there any public comments of this item? Here now, any commission comment? No. Commissioner Seber, if you please read the proclamation, lights on after school.
Whereas the citizens of Tarpon Springs stand firmly committed to quality after-school programs and opportunities because they provide safe, challenging, and engaging learning experiences that help children develop social, emotional, physical, and academic skills. Support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after their regular school days. Build stronger communities and involving students, parents, business leaders, and adult volunteers. Whereas Lights On After School, the national celebration of after-school programs held this year on October twenty sixth, two thousand seventeen promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities. And whereas the City of Tarpon Springs enthusiastically endorses Lights On After School and commits our community to engage in innovative after-school programs and activities to ensure the lights stay on and the doors stay open for all children after school. Now therefore, I, Reyes Seber, by virtue of the authority vested in me and the mayor of Tarpon, the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim October twenty sixth, two thousand seventeen as Lights On After School Day. And this will be mailed.
Thank you. Any public comments of this item? Here now, any commission comment? Okay, Commissioner Carr, would you read the proclamation, Florida City Government Week?
Yes. Whereas the city government is the government closest to the most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents. And whereas municipal government provides services and programs that enhance the quality of life for residents, making their city their home. And whereas the city government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public comment to an understanding of its many responsibilities. And whereas the city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along the understanding of public services and their benefits. And whereas the Florida City Government Week offers an important opportunity for elected officials and city staff to spread the word to all citizens of Florida that they can shape and influence this branch of government. Now therefore, I, Commissioner Jacob Carr, by the virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim the week of October twenty third through twenty ninth, two thousand seventeen as Florida City Government Week. And we hope you will all join, excuse me, and we hope you will join us in the celebration and learn more about your city and how it operates for you. This will be mailed.
Thank you. Any public comments on this item?
I've got, I'm sorry, I'm not public. Yeah, just one. I had the opportunity to stand with the mayor, vice mayor, and Commissioner Seber at our last Citizens Academy. My understanding is that the next Citizens Academy starts sometime in January, they're still registering now. So if anyone's watching online or anyone in the audience knows anyone that's interested, this was a great opportunity. Again, thanks to, thanks to Vice Mayor Banther, who initially brought this up a couple of years ago before I was on the board, and all the heads of our departments, it's a great way for our residents here in Tarpon Springs to really see what goes on in our town. So if I can encourage anybody to do that, I definitely would, thank you.
Thank you. Any other commission comment? You know, thank you, we are now going to the consent agenda. Item number two is the twenty feet invoice one four seven one, one seven zero two, and one seven zero three. Item number three is special events, Maritime Festival, November fifth, two thousand seventeen. B is the Sponge Ducks Seafood Festival, November ten through November twelve. C is Stone Crab Festival, November eighteen. D is Thanksgiving Arts and Crafts Show, November twenty fifth and twenty sixth. E is St. Nicholas Fish Day Procession, November fifth. Item number four is the award file, number one eight zero zero two two, N R S, single source purchase of Flurnator Equipment and Services. Item number five is the award file, one eight zero zero two one, C R S Liquid Costi Soda through the City of Tampa, and the bin number thirty one zero seven eighteen seventeen. And item number six is the extended file, number one seven zero one three two dash R, this R S Revenue Generated Contract for Dense Classes. Any items that you'd like to pull?
Three, three B, please.
Three B?
I think you have an addendum too, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, I was gonna do the. Three, three C, three B?
B, bro.
Okay. Are there any commission comments of the items with the exception of three B? Any public comments on this item? I need a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of three B.
Motion approved.
Second.
Let's discuss the Sponge Duck Seafood Festival, November ten through the twelfth. Vice Mayor?
Do we need to vote first on the other one or no?
Can vote on it, we can vote all together.
Doesn't matter.
Roll call.
Did you want to include the addendum?
I was gonna do that separately, yeah.
This is for two through six excluding three B. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes. Vice Mayor, you want to talk about the three B?
Yes, I just want to clarify some things with the city manager, I know we're trying to be a little more careful about events in the docks, closures, et cetera, and this one just caught my eye, I know it's been done in the past. So Mark, just to confirm, this would, would this, which portions of the streets would this close from noon on Friday, if I'm reading this correctly, to six P M. on Sunday? I know, and then obviously at nighttime, it opens back up or late, late at night.
I believe, I, I believe it's going from Athens Street to Roosevelt.
That, that's, that's a good portion of Sponge Ducks that are closed down to all traffic, correct?
Yes, Friday through Sunday.
Okay, all right. And also one thing I'm, 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 I'm concerned about is, I mean, we have, I think, some of, I think we have the best seafood in Tampa Bay offered on, on, on Sponge Ducks all the way from Julian Jackman on the West End through Andy's Restaurants on, on the, on the East End. And I'm just kind of, you know, a little, a little bit concerned of why we're bringing competing food sources in, into the Sponge Ducks when we have good seafood there. Do the local merchants participate in this besides just being open, or is it people that, that we bring in, like food trucks and other vendors?
I could speak on that if you'd like, Mark. Because we do invite all the local restaurants to participate, Rusty Bellies participates, so I know that definitely no one is excluded.
I think this is done through, is it, this is one of the ones done through the event person?
Uh, yes, yes, it's been going on about twenty years.
They rent and pay for their spaces, you know, just like everybody else does.
I, I, I had asked Rusty Bellies if they are, if they are part of it this year, and they, 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 they said no. You know, it's fine, I just, you know, I'm sure if we had, if we had a beer and wine festival on the Sponge Ducks, I'm sure there'd be some concern and rightfully so from other vendors there. So I get a little bit confused why we're gonna be having people that, you know, come in and sell food to compete with our, with our, with our local vendors. And, you know, I don't know if, if, if their seafood is as good, but if it's been successful for, for, for twenty years and they don't mind the, the, the streets being closed for three days, I think that's a bit excessive. Next year, I'd like to see it shortened to maybe two days, I, I think three's excessive, but I'll go ahead and motion to approve.
I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any commission comment?
Yes, I just want to say this is a very successful event every year and brings in a lot of visitors and business to the docks, so we always appreciate being there.
Any other comments? Any public comments on this item, three B? You know, roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes, we also have an addendum on the consent agenda, which is our twenty feet invoice, one four seven zero and five four eight eight four. Any public comments on this item? Here now, any, any commission comment? I need a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes, thank you. And we are now going to the special consent agenda, which is item number seven. Award file number eighteen zero zero twenty four, dash C, dash C M, National Joint Powers Alliance, contract number one two zero seven sixteen. N A F Vehicles, Cars, Vans, S U Vs, and Light Trucks for the purchase of vehicles. Mr. LaCourts?
Again, these are vehicle purchases, they're all budgeted. Obviously, once the budget goes into effect October, all the cities are trying to buy their vehicles, so we try to do this as early as possible. Again, they're all, they are, you saw them all in our budget, and this gets us a, an early start to purchase them, because, you know, there'll be months coming in, but if we don't get on the front end, we're gonna be waiting with all the other cities. So again, this is one of the items brought to you on special consent because of the price, but again, you did see it and approve it in the budget you approved for this year.
Well, thank you, Mr. LaCourts, it's very important for the operation to have dependable equipment and transportation. Question I was going to ask, if we purchase it now, that is the end of the year, do we get a better price or?
Well, this is actually the beginning of the purchasing year.
Okay.
So this is the bid, this is October.
The year, the vehicle's usually cheaper.
Well, at, at the end of the year, you only gets what's left from the bids that start in October.
Okay.
So, so most of the ones you might want are gonna be gone by that time and stuff. So this is when the bid goes into effect for this year and stuff, so they're not gonna change from now to the end. So, and like I say, everybody who's purchasing vehicles through these contracts are gonna be doing it, that's why we do it early.
What do we do with the old vehicles, we give them to charity or take them to auction?
Oh, we'll auction, we'll, we'll auction them off, most of the time they'll go to auction.
Do we ever offer them to the charity if they can use any time?
Hmm, no, we haven't. And there's it, no. Lot of issues when you do, who do you give it to, why do you give it to, it's much better government process to, to put it to auction and, and to go with it.
Any commission comments? No? Any public comments on this item? Here now? Need a, I need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to item number eight, which is the award file, one eight two five, uh, excuse me, one eight zero zero two five C C M. Florida Sheriff's, Sheriff Association Contract Number F S A sixteen E, V F V twelve. Five rescue vehicles and other fleet equipment for the purchase of a far bumper. A far truck. They call a bumper? Why they call a bumper?
Pumper.
Why?
Pumper.
Pumper.
Yeah.
Okay.
Chief is here to tell about his new vehicle.
Hello, Scott Young, Fire Chief. Uh, this is a pumper that we're looking, or fire engine basically, to get, replace one of our oldest in our fleet. Uh, this new engine is coming out of penny money, and it'll also be out at the new station, out of Station Seventy One. So I'm looking forward to this, the engine that it's gonna be replacing is over sixteen years old and it's starting to cost us quite a bit in maintenance, so it's, it's done its time.
Thank you. I have a question to ask, Mr. LaCourts, I'm chief. Is this price of six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, is that including all the necessary equipment that it probably must have, or is it something?
It includes everything except the additional equipment that we need to put on it. Uh, we've budgeted some money to upgrade some of the equipment after it's delivered to go on it. Uh, some of the stuff that we have now is just kind of wore out, so we have budgeted some other stuff to go on the truck later.
Okay, we'll make sure it's fully equipped.
It'll be fully equipped, it'll have everything it needs.
Thank you. Permission comments? Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, I think that, 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 this is great, and this is a reminder that we all, we all need, need to vote yes for the penny for Dallas money, because it's an important funding, funding project, especially for our public sake.
Any other comment?
I've got a question.
Carr?
Thanks, uh, chief, don't we have a backup truck too that is, like, when one of the trucks is on maintenance? Is, can you just, like, just explain to me real quick how that rotation works, where?
We have, we have five units. Three of them are our frontline units that are at each station, and then we have two reserve units. In our rotation plan, we always take the oldest in the fleet and replace it when it's time, so we always have two in a backup situation. So if one's in for maintenance, we'll have one in service with one reserved for that. Uh, there's been times that we've had both reserves in place because of maintenance issues, so we always have two.
So one of the maintenance trucks are being retired then, and then the?
Right, one of the reserves is gonna be replaced, the oldest one in the fleet, sixteen years plus.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Any public comments on this item? Here now, your chair will entertain a motion?
Approved.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes, thank you, we're now going to the item number nine. This is to renew the file number one two zero one, two two, and J J, maintenance for public restrooms at the Sponge Ducks. Mr. LaCourts?
This is, we see this every year in October, um, the restrooms, it's sponge exchange. So again, it's the same price amount, not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars. And there's not much difference, they did do the renovation work, we asked them to. I think their pictures
Yep.
were enclosed. That they did do that renovation that we asked last time and that we would have told them before it's brought back again to do, so, so that worked, had been done. I know there's some issues or maybe another sign they should do that we can get with them on and do it, but substantially, they did what they told them, so I recommend approval of this contract.
Any commission comment?
Yes. I know this comes up every year and I have comments about it every year. They did do some work and it looks much better, I, I've gone by there, there and checked, and I still feel like we need some signage showing that we have bathrooms in the back other than the little sign that says restrooms on the, on the map, because you really can't see that from, unless you get right up to it. And we need to do a better job of, of cleaning, or they need to do a better job of cleaning. We see TripAdvisor reviews that talk about the deplorable conditions of the bathrooms on the docks, and I don't think they're the city bathrooms that they're talking about, so we just, you know, if we're giving them that money, need to make sure that they, they stay clean. I appreciate the work that they've done, but still, signage cleaner, thank you.
Thank you, any other comment?
I've got one, just a question, how did we come up with the seventy-five hundred dollars? Is it, they decided, they decided that it's cost X amount of dollars to clean on a monthly basis, or?
Sort of, I think it began at, I think it was five thousand and then, but that's mainly what it is, it was something involved with negotiation between the commission and them to do that with, and that's the number that we are at now. I believe it started at five thousand and went up the last year or the year before to seventy-five hundred.
I think it would be a good idea to look at what the city expects to be, to see on a cleaning schedule of some sort. Um, if Commissioner Reyes saying that there's TripAdvisor statements about it, I've heard from other people too of issues with the bathrooms there. Um, I think it's worth looking into and just having a background, maybe reaching out to Mr. Pappas about it and see what his schedule is, and especially if we're paying seventy-five hundred dollars a year. Uh, that's a significant amount of money, I think, for sharing bathrooms, but it's an important part to have in the Sponge Ducks as well, because we know there's a lot of visitors that are down there and there's not many facilities.
Yes, we will, as we said last year, we will monitor it at various times and do inspections of it as under Tom Function and his people, so they will do that to make sure it's keeping up that way.
Yeah, I think it might be a good idea in the future to look at some requirements in the contract that might say expectations to be cleaned on daily basis or something along those lines, or be checked twice a day, out of respect for our visitors here in Tarpon Springs. Thanks.
Mayor? If we're going to check their bathrooms frequently, we need to check the ones that we have as well down at the Sponge Ducks. I get complaints on those restrooms, floors, I mean, you could slip and fall, I'm not kidding you, on those floors, they're disgusting. So if we could start, you know, checking on our own bathrooms that are down there, I would, yeah, I don't know how often they're cleaned, but.
But you'd be, you'd be surprised, not people who have businesses and stuff, how fast, they can be cleaned an hour and a half later, they can be trashed.
Oh, I bet, I bet.
We have updated our inspections of those for those cases just because.
Yeah, I'm sure you've got complaints too, and I have, but we have, you know, we do have a lot of events down there and a lot of visitors and whatnot, so I'm sure they, you know, they get used frequently and trashed frequently, but if we could just, I mean, if we're gonna put those kind of restrictions on Mr. Pappas, we need to adhere to it ourselves.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, it, it's very important that we provide public restrooms down at the Sponge Ducks. We have the ones that the city. We have the, uh, ones that the city, uh, restrooms that we built, uh, several years ago. But, uh, this is very important that we got the ones down at, uh, at the exchange. Last week, it was a, an event, the salsa night. I don't know how many people there were there, but I'm glad that we had, but I'm glad that we had the, uh, the restrooms available for the people to use. So yes, and they need to be cleaned. And, uh, I'm sure they're doing, you know, whatever they can to keep it clean. Just like you said, in an hour, it can be dirty again. Thank you. We go into the public comments. Any public comments on this item?
Here to Lax five one four Ashland Avenue. Seventy-five hundred sounds like a lot, but I just did a quick calculation. By three sixty-five days, it comes out to twenty dollars and fifty cents. I don't know if we can hire somebody to clean a bathroom for twenty dollars and fifty cents, much less the toilet paper, the papers, the soap. So let's put that in perspective. However, stating that, let's go back to originally when we were talking about building the new bathrooms down where they are across from Halas, that at some point we would evaluate whether there was a need to continue the rental of Mr. Pappas's. Now, it's obvious the board believes that is the case. Then, to me, the last thing that appears to be the issue, which both Commissioners Kikka and Seber have said, is accountability. So I would recommend or suggest that in some way, uh, through either our building department or code or whoever we have for public works, to find, devise some system of a more efficient accountability and checking system. And then, as we've talked about before, if there's a certain number of demerits or bad check marks versus good check marks, then at some point you'll have some basis the next time this come around to really have more knowledge to evaluate. So to me, makes sense to continue to go with this, but I think you need more information to make a better decision in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item?
Mike Cusco is six two three East Harpen Avenue. I don't believe I'm up here talking about restrooms, but in any event, the only comment I would make is, is, you know, we have one at Craig Park and, you know, I, I've heard discussion about cleaning up some of the restrooms. Um, that's one the city owns. And I don't know at some point in time that I think a consideration probably needs to be had about improving the restrooms at Craig Park.
You haven't been there lately.
Oh, okay, well, that's why I haven't gone and used them because last time I was in there, they were pretty bad. So if they've been fixed, I apologize, I retract my comment.
But thank you anyway. Any other comments? Here and then? I will entertain a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor, who's this?
Yes. We are now going to the item number ten, which is the award bid number one seven zero one six eight B J J Production and monitoring well construction maintenance and ejection well maintenance. Mr. Licorice, I guess Bob Robertson will be the person?
He's ready for you.
He's ready.
Good evening. Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. I'm here on behalf of the Public Services Department. Um, this item is requesting your approval for a five-year contract for various well construction and maintenance services. The bid that we received was based on price proposals of all of the potential work items that we would expect this contractor to do over that period, including such items as well drilling, well testing, and well maintenance services, to name a few of them. The apparent low bidder is a reliable contractor that we've worked with before. They drilled all but two of the R O wells, so they're quite familiar with our systems, which is an advantage. We are requesting approval of three, of a three hundred thousand dollar upper limit for the first year of work and renewable annually. And this year, we expect to drill three new R O production wells, uh, among other miscellaneous work. These funds are budgeted and they are included in the Water C I P. Any questions?
Uh, just one quick question. Are we, uh, planning to get a second injection well? We have one now. Are we planning to get a second one?
We have no plans to do a second injection well. We don't really need it because we have a backup with a surface water discharge at the co-located, um, facility at the Anclote Steam Plant, Duke Energy Plant.
Yeah, I was thinking because the, uh, the other plan that we have to discharge on Anclote was not as popular. I thought if we go with a second injection would be better, would be better.
Well, um, this, we specifically took that out of this contract, um, because it's a high-dollar item. Uh, for reference, it, it was nearly two million dollars to drill, test and, and get the, the injection, the existing injection well into operation. So it's really not something we felt like we needed, especially if we have the surface water discharge as a backup. And primarily, um, the only reason we would ever need to use that surface water discharge is if there was, um, if, if and when we go to maintenance testing, not if, when we do maintenance integrity testing on the injection well. We have to do that every five years by permit. You have to shut down that well for a few days. And if there was something that went wrong, uh, during the testing, for whatever reason, we would have the surface water as a backup, but we wouldn't anticipate really needing it.
Any commission comment? Permission Corps?
Thanks for, uh, coming up and talking about this. The seven hundred and three thousand dollars here, um, is that the cost to drill the wells and maintain it over the next five years? Or is that just the cost to drill the, the new wells?
Oh, I understand the question. The, the basis for the bid was we had the contractor propose a number and line items for each, uh, cost items for each of the proposed services that we might do over the five-year term. So it was, that was our way to evaluate which, which was gonna be the low bid, which contractor was gonna be a little bit. So even though that says seven hundred and three thousand dollars, that's the sum of all the line items that they could possibly do. That doesn't mean we're gonna do seven hundred and three thousand dollars of work in any given year. In fact, I believe, Jay, we told them two hundred thousand was, was a, a minimum they could expect every year, um, as an upper limit. And we're, we're asking for three hundred for the first year because we're looking to, to, to get, hit the ground running and drill three, three new wells. So I hope that explains that.
I wasn't under, I was trying to figure out if this is for the five years total, the seven hundred thousand dollars? Or if that was an annual number that they were projecting?
No, just the sum of all the line items.
Okay, and that could be done over a five-year period, basically?
Well, I, I guess to answer your question, yes, it could be. Uh, any one of those line items could be done over the five-year period.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other commission comment? No. Any public comments on this item? Here and then? Motion please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yeah.
Mayor, who's this?
Yes, thank you. Item number eleven, don't go away, that's yours too.
I didn't.
Uh, approve additional services authorization number one for bid number one seven zero one zero zero B J J Lake Tarpon Cemetery Sewer Extension Phase Number Three. And it's here.
Thank you. Again, Bob Robertson, Project Administration Director, and again, here for public, on behalf of the Public Services Department. Um, this item is requesting your approval of a change order to an existing contract. Uh, the purpose of the existing contract is for construction of new gravity sewer lines in the Lake Tarpon Sewer, uh, excuse me, Lake Tarpon area. With the awarded bid coming in lower than the projected budget and with Commissioner Carr's suggestion, we're able to afford replacement of thirty-one hundred feet of aging water distribution pipes in that area with brand-new PVC pipes. The cost of the additional services is a hundred one thousand nine hundred and four dollars. We're proposing to pay for that with fifty thousand dollars out of the existing board-approved contingency and an additional fifty-one thousand nine hundred and four dollar change order for which we're asking you to approve tonight. I'm excited that we're able to, to get this additional work put in the project because it came in so far under budget. Um, the, the estimate is based entirely on the waterline work. Um, there's no restoration or excavation required because it's already part of the sewer-ing project. So we're getting some real cost savings, taking advantage of being able to get this done under this existing contract. Um, with that, I'll stop for questions.
Well, it makes sense to replace the water pipe when the ditch is already open and you're working already on a project to place the sewer line.
Yes.
And I will thank Commissioner Carr for coming up with the idea. I think it's great. I think this is something that we use that as a, uh, be part of the criteria, part of the policy. Uh, since we're talking about water lines, if you have that information, share it with us. If you can tell us about the, the progress of the water lines replacement project. We budgeted five hundred thousand dollars every year, for every year. Can you tell us where we're standing with it?
Sure. Uh, I checked in with the Public Services Department be- before the, the meeting. And, um, what they've told me is they've completed almost twenty-six hundred feet of replacement of water lines in the city uh, um, up to date. And looking forward into the next, into this fiscal year where we've got the five hundred thousand dollars budgeted, they've got, they've identified almost, well, ten thousand five hundred and eighty feet of water line that, that they want to replace in various areas of the city, uh, for various reasons. Some primarily water quality driven, um, where we have old rusting pipes that need to be replaced. Uh, some have some, uh, pressure issues that we want to address. And in some cases, it's dual, where we're not only addressing water quality but fire flow issues. So there's a lot of reasons that, that those things need to get replaced.
I'm sure we identify the areas that need to be replaced, right?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Thank you for, uh, bringing this back to us. I, I do think it's a great opportunity to, uh, replace some aging lines when their ground's already open for other projects. And, uh, thank you to both you and Paul for, uh, being willing to look at this and being proactive to, to approach it this way. Um, I'm encouraged to hear, after meeting with you guys multiple times about other projects and water lines and you guys know your stuff quite well and, uh, I'm confident you guys are doing a great job with everything. So thanks again for bringing this back.
Thank you.
Any other, oh, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I want to thank Commissioner Carr for his contribution to this and obviously her, Bob, for always doing great, great, great work for us.
Thank you.
Any other comments now? Any public comments on this item? Here and then? I will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Mayor, who's this?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Bob. Item number twelve is the ordinance two thousand seventeen dash thirty, application seventeen one zero eight, establish a temporary moratorium on wireless communications facilities. This is the first reading. The city attorney will read the ordinance.
Ordinance twenty seventeen dash thirty, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, establishing a temporary moratorium on the submittal and processing of any application and issuance of any permit for location of any wireless communication facilities, towers or antennas in the city's right-of-way for a period of one hundred twenty days, providing for conflict severability, construction and publication, and providing for an effective date. Uh, ordinance twenty seventeen dash thirty by first reading, second reading to be held on November seventh, twenty seventeen, and will be published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on October twenty seventh, twenty seventeen.
Heather Earblower, putting in zoning director and staff to this application. Um, this essentially is an issue that came up, um, last year during the legislative session. And as a result of that, um, staff and what was actually passed, uh, a bill, um, staff wants to look at this issue, do some research and determine if we need to update our sections of code relating to putting wireless communication towers in our public right-of-ways. So that's essentially what we're asking for tonight is just giving us the hundred and twenty days, um, to give us some time to study the issue and prepare what needs to be prepared in the way of amendments. And I can answer any questions you have. There are two, uh, on the second and of the page of the ordinance, uh, the town of Reading to Beach needs to be pulled out, City of Tarpon Springs needs to be replaced in the title there under before section one. And then town staff should be changed to city staff, so that, those will be corrected, um, during the second read.
Thank you. This is the, for the five G, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Well, five G is a new technology, much faster, but more bandwidth, but also requires more cell site on the top of the telephone pole. And yes, we need to make sure we keep them away from, uh, Main Street, Pinellas and Tarpon if it's possible. Any commission comment? Any public comments on this item?
Hi, I'm Beth Bird. Um, thank you very much for letting me speak tonight. Um, I'm at two twenty North Walton in Tarpon Springs. I'm a student of Public Policy Administration at Saint Petersburg College with Professor Jeff Croncheneble. Um, I want to thank Tricia, who is Heather Earblower's intern, who was able to speak to me regarding this issue. And, um, she, we had a brief discussion regarding the size of the towers. The small ones are usually not visible, I've seen it all. With those, um, many are necessary to have better cell service. She said the city needs this moratorium to make sure that they can be in compliance with the new law that passed, H B six eighty-seven. I noticed that the City of Saint Petersburg Beach unanimously voted to pass this. Um, but Tampa also dealt with this issue. And, um, Senior Assistant City Attorney Rebecca Kurt recommended that the city adopt the regulations. They had done an ordinance afterwards. Um, because not having an ordinance on the books would even be worse. The City of Tampa is being sued over the abatement by C T I A, the Wireless Association, saying that the city's abatement violated both state and federal law. Um, I spoke to an author who had, um, written to the City League of Cities regarding this. And, um, in his recommendation for success, he had recommended that cities use caution when considering a moratorium. He said, um, he doesn't know the city, the situation facing our city regarding this. And he's sure we have good attorneys that advise us in these cases. Um, but if possible, he recommends that we make an ordinance instead of a moratorium. Um, we have to weigh what the likelihood of dispute is with us. Um, he also didn't know what issues that we're facing. And I love the City of Tarpon Springs. I've lived here for a while now. And I know that every, we really like our city to look really well, so I'm sure she'll be looking into that very well. Um, it's kind of a hard situation our city's been put into because the state law is not letting us choose where these can go, it sounded like. But we all do want good cell service. Um, so my recommendation is just if there's possible, that we can do a carefully crafted, crafted ordinance. Um, instead, do that, but otherwise do the moratorium, because we don't want to be hasty in this issue. Um, thank you for your time and kindness and, um, thank you. Sorry, do you have any questions?
No, I just want to thank you for, uh, working with our, uh, planning and zoning board department and you're learning. Thank you. You learn from, from the best. Thank you for, uh, for doing it.
Thank you.
Any other public comments on this item? Here and then? The chair will entertain a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
In roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yeah.
Mayor, who's this?
Yes, thank you. Item number thirteen is appointment to, uh, homeless leadership board. We receive a notification that Commissioner Seber resigned from the Pinellas County Homeless Leadership Board and we need a volunteer to, to, to serve on this board. Do we have any volunteers for that? Uh, if you look at on the backup information, we have a list of, uh, board members, commis-, uh, that is serving on the different boards. Uh, I'm already serving on Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council and also Mayor's Council and many other committees. Vice Mayor Banther is serving on P H T A. I think you had your first meeting already?
I didn't. In my, uh, in my comments, I'll share some.
Okay, good. Uh, also, uh, General Employee Pension Board. And Commissioner Carr is serving on the School Transportation Safety Committee for Pinellas County. So we need a volunteer for this.
I just want to say, uh, I've served, this is my fourth year, uh, having been on this board and I've served more than one term. Uh, it's a great board, uh, to serve on. I just don't have the, the extra time right now to, to devote to, to this board. But I'd be happy to in the future, maybe serve on another board.
And how often do they meet?
And how often do they meet?
They typically meet once a month. Sometimes more often if there's ongoing, you know, issues.
The difficult thing is the Friday afternoon usually, it's usually the same time as the city manager being first Friday afternoon. And obviously, we've got a board that a lot of them work, and I know it's probably one of the toughest times to get off. Is, and you lose a whole driving down, driving back, you lose a whole Friday afternoon as it goes. So also, they do not allow staff or somebody, it's elected officials they want on the board. I know we broached before about the problem if somebody could cover, and they want the elected official. But again, it is a difficult time for, especially a board that's a working board, to get off work and go to it. So that's one of the, I know that's one of the issues.
And I want to thank Commissioner Seber. She relieved me from that position. I do mean the word relieved. She's, I was not productive on that board. And she, I think, was better suited for that board. And I realize it is a huge time commitment if you have any type of business. And so I don't, I don't blame her at all for her not being able to be on it anymore. If no one's able to be on this board, and I've talked about this with Mark, not now, but in budget season next year, I would really have a conversation about that, I think it's five thousand dollars that we send down there each year. And if maybe we could better use that five thousand dollars to help the homeless locally in some manner. Again, I have no answers to that. But, you know, my briefs on that board, and what Commissioner Seber has said has improved. I can't say, I'm really not productive. I'll just be honest with you. So I would like to have a conversation in the summertime and during the next budget workshop, if we need to direct those funds elsewhere, especially if we have no member that's able to serve. And I'd also maybe even question why we can't have a staff person go. I mean, I think that's ridiculous. So that's just my thoughts on it.
Yeah, yeah, Vice Mayor, I discussed that with our City Attorney just before the meeting. And I was advised that because we have the interlocal agreement. But that agreement can change.
Yeah, we can propose changes to it. And as I mentioned before the meeting, I don't know precisely what it says. I'm speculating it does not permit staff, because they ordinarily don't. That doesn't mean it can't be changed to do that. It just thinks, I think at this point, Irene talked about it beforehand. I'll put my hands on it. So you could defer this item and we could, we could look at it and determine if that's permitted. And if not, whether there is any, any will on behalf of the other parties to the interlocal to do that.
Mayor, start with that thing. Because it would have been perfect, Officer Ugulas, who retired.
That's what I was going to mention.
Would have been perfect for that board.
We have an officer now.
He knows every homeless person in Tarpon Springs. I mean, far more than I ever will. I sound the ones that pass out behind my business, and that's the truth. So I mean, that's why I think we need to, we want to continue supporting this board, and they do do good things. Don't get, don't get me wrong on that, you know. And it is a big time commitment, and all of us were. You know, I think, you know, again, I know he's retired now, but having somebody like that who's intricately involved with the homeless in Tarpon Springs makes a lot more sense. They report back to the board of commissioners, they're accountable to, well, if it's a police officer, to the chief and to Mark, to see what we can do about that. But I just, you know, that's just, I think if that doesn't work out, then in budget season, we need to talk about if that money is worth.
Let's defer it if I have a motion for that, and then our City Attorney will find out.
Motion to what?
To defer.
Well, the only, if nobody, if nobody can serve, I mean, if nobody can serve, nobody can serve, no one's going to defer it. The problem, when I asked about it several years back or something, the answer was that the level of decision making for that board is on the level of elected officials, not on the, not on the level of.
Agree. I'm looking at some of the names.
I'm just telling you what they, what they told me. So.
That's what they say. That doesn't mean how it is.
Exactly.
And we can have our City Attorney to verify that, and we request to have a change.
Could I add something? We have a current resource officer, homeless resource officer, and, you know, this was just something we could maybe even look at too. Because I think that also somebody who deals with the homeless in this city would be better serving this board than, than one of us. Even though I appreciate it being on the board, but, yeah, it's very time consuming.
Well, what I would prefer is if nobody can serve on it, you vote that no one can serve on it. And then we can compose a letter up to ask them if they would consider somebody else of a staff member to do it. If they tell us no, then they tell us no. But I don't think it's going to change for deferring it for the next meeting or the meeting after. If all you with the work obligation, everything can't do it, then we don't have somebody that'd like to pass it. And then we can send a letter. If you want somebody representing us, you know, can we send it to it? That's what I would prefer, and I think would be the fastest form of action, because we'll just end up the same place when we come back to it.
I would motion for no appointment. That's the correct motion.
But, but let me ask a question. The City Attorney is offering to look at the documents and see if, you know, somewhere it does state in there that we can appoint somebody other than an elected official. Because we're not completely.
That's what I'm saying.
Because there's hundreds of charities on the board.
How do you know?
Because that's what they told us when we brought this issue up before.
Providers that are on the board, and then the others are elected officials.
Sat next to cap of charities the whole time.
I mean, that's what I'm saying. I'm looking at these names here. They're not all elected officials.
No, there's a lot of providers on that board, as well as someone from the Sheriff's Department and county commissioners and other city commissioners on the board.
If you can modify your motion.
Yes, sir.
To include that if we can, we're going to ask them to change the policy that they have? And then we just assign a staff member?
I would motion for no, no, no board appointment to direct our city manager and city attorney to work with them to see if we can have a policy change or an appropriate staff person can represent Tarpon Springs.
And do we have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, roll call please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes, thank you. We have an addendum. Appointment to Court Enforcement Board. We have five appointments, so let's do one at a time. The first one, it says to fill the expired term of Mr. Bergman. The new term expires November first, two thousand twenty. So we can select one of the two alternates, alternate one and alternate two, to move him up to the regular position. That's acceptable to you guys?
Yes, sir.
You want to make them, you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
You select one of the two names?
I assume alternate one, Julie Wade, is she, is that alternate one position assuming she's, was selected beforehand? She has a higher ranking alternate, if you will.
Vice Mayor, it makes no difference, because if we do the number two, the both terms expire at the same time.
One and two are all, are the same, and if you look in the backup, the current alternates are, were both appointed at the same meeting.
Okay, well then, well, then, yeah, just let's, let's do Julie. Yeah, yes, sir.
Wait. Do we have any other recommendations, options on that?
No.
We'll go with that?
Motion to appoint Julie Wade to fill the expired term of Donald Bergman.
Okay. And we have a second?
Second.
Well, I'd like to get to the public comments, so we wait for that vote later?
Later.
Okay. The option number two is to fill the expired term of Mr. Democes. The new term expires November first, two thousand twenty. And the other alternate position on number two is for Thomas Wicks. And if I'm not mistaken, he attended the Citizens Academy. Am I right?
Yep.
They both have.
Have a motion for that as well?
I would motion for Thomas Weeks, alternate two, to fill the vacancy, or sorry, the expired term of Carl Democes.
Okay. Any other? Do we have any other recommendations, option?
Can, excuse me, can we do a motion? I need a roll call vote on the first one. That was to appoint Mrs. Wade.
Well, let me ask for public comments. Do we have any public comments on that? Now, yes, roll call please, on the option one.
It's on the first motion. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes. And option two?
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yeah.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes, thank you. And option three is to fill the expired term for, of Mrs. Cassi. The new term expires November first, two thousand twenty. We must, we can select one of the names in the back. Just recommendation is Sonny Norfleet. She attended the Citizens Academy?
Yes, sir.
Can I remind everybody of something first? I just want everybody to take note on these next three. You've got a difference in amount of service time. So you need to take that into consideration when you're putting the people in the different spots. So we get to think, some of them may be shorter terms when they, for instance, when they serve a shorter one. So probably your number one choice should be that choice in the two thousand twenty. However, your second choice would be, would be down in five for the two thousand nineteen. And the third choice would be there to know the times when they expire, and that means they're going to be on the board list by the rules and stuff. So just before you go to them, I want to make sure you're.
Well, Citizens Academy, I would.
Well, that would be the first, but as you're, as you're looking at the second and the third one, you need to take that in, because they're different. They go eighteen, and the next one's nineteen. So just remember that when you're making your, your next ones.
Number three?
Yes, sir.
You were.
I would motion to appoint.
Sonny.
Sonny, Sonny Norfleet.
Norfleet.
To fill the expired term of Wanda Cassi.
Pecassi, yes.
Second.
Any other option now? Well, we have a motion. Would you do the roll call?
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yeah.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes, thank you. Well, option number four is to fill the unexpired term for Linda Ellen. This term expires November first, two thousand eighteen. And to select a person from the list that we have on the second page.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Tim Robinson?
Okay.
To fill the unexpired term of Linda Ellen. Term to expire November first, two thousand eighteen.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other option? Now, roll call please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yeah.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes. And number five is to fill the unexpired term of Bonnie Profki. The term expires November first, two thousand nineteen, and we must select a person from the list. I will recommend Bruce Kramer. He has experience to serve on the board. Since we appoint so many new people, it's good to have a person that has the experience, in my opinion.
I agree.
Do you agree with that? Do you want to make a motion for that?
Make a motion to fill the unexpired term of Bonnie Profki, whose term expires November one, twenty nineteen, and Mr. Kramer, is it?
Yeah, Bruce Kramer.
Yes, Bruce Kramer.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second?
I've got a question.
Sure.
Did Mr. Kramer resign from the board recently, over the past couple of months? I remember seeing that somewhere he was replaced. I can't remember which board that was. Does anyone recall?
I believe his term was, had expired, and he sat out for the term that he was supposed to, from that board.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other option? Now, and roll call please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Thank you.
Mayor LaHusus?
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on the elections we just did? Appointments that we can get. Thank you. Well, that concludes the regulation meeting, and it's adjourned at seven thirty-three PM. It's in a nice clock, man. We are now going to the CRA meeting. I'm calling to order the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, October seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, at seven thirty-three PM. Roll call please.
Mayor LaHusus?
Here.
Vice Chair Banther?
Here.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Commissioner Kikta?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Thank you. We have item number one is to consider final offer from the Font City Enterprise Incorporated for the purchase of the Sun Bay Motel property on fifty-seven West Tarpon Avenue. Low reminder that on October third, we, the CRA board, declined the offer to purchase the Sun Bay Motel to pay the nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for it. And we directed Mr. Licorice and the City Attorney to make another reasonable offer to the property owner. On October ninth, two thousand seventeen, I sent a memo to Mr. Licorice to request to provide the CRA board with different options on users, on to develop the property and to, and the cost for each one of those options. And also the cost for demolishing the existing structure. Mr. Licorice will present to us the offer that he received from the property owner and also different options that we have on how to develop this property. Mr. Licorice?
Okay, first of all, I'll kind of go over what's in your backup. As you know from the letter I sent you between this meeting and last meeting, the property owner and their attorneys were not interested in entering to any more negotiations. They felt that's what the mediation was for. However, they did send you a letter, and they did reduce the price to eight ninety-five. And pretty much said, here is our offer. Would you consider in the next meeting and turn it down or approve it? So it's, although we're directed to go back and negotiate, when you get a letter like that, there's, there's no negotiating for that purpose. I'm going to try to reset a little bit of the whole scenario, because this, this whole thing from the start, even when we go back to August, there's been some issues that's kind of cast things about this whole project from the start. First of all, I want to say in this project, it's one of those ones back in debate class when you used to have a subject, and you had to pick whether you, when you voted, whether you argued for it or against it. You know, you're really hoping you didn't get the one you didn't argue. This is one that anybody could have good arguments on either side of the issue. We've heard them before this board. We've seen the citizens arguing for, arguing against. Pretty much the same. Again, it'd be very easy to argue both of those ways. We started out with a large group of people back in August of last year, an issue. We all know what the issues are with the Sun Bay Motel. As far as I'm concerned, the issues got a little out of whack, because we started talking about getting the property and doing some type of park or open space. We kind of went into it real fast to negotiate. And obviously, what I was sent to do is negotiate with really no cards in my deck. A lot of people wanted that property gained. We really didn't have an owner that was too receptive, obviously, whatever I wanted, the price. You know, I was able to get the price from two million down to about one-six or one-five. But when I came to you in January, it was obvious that he was negotiating from a superior position. And he didn't plan to go down with the normal realms of negotiations. You, as a board, in January, voted to give some help in the negotiations and giving me some people and some attorneys to help negotiate it. Obviously, we think we hired the best two attorneys to help, myself and the City Attorney. In a lot of people's opinion, he went out and hired the second best. So obviously, he went out and hired an appraisal, and you've got a piece of the appraisal and his letters that you sent, and the properties they compared. Obviously, in looking at that, you can say, well, these don't meet what this hotel is, but they. Obviously, in looking at that, you can say, well, these don't meet what this hotel is, but they say the same thing about us. Ours don't meet it. So we went from a beginning point of one point four hundred and sixty thousand, somewhere just under one point five million. Um, we negotiated down, went to an all-day mediation and came from our original appraisal, six ninety to the nine-ten. They come from their one four hundred and sixty down to that point. And that's where we, we finally negotiated. Obviously, this board in their last meeting, you know, you know, there was not three votes to go forward. A lot of it had to do with the price. Um, that's when we came back and was asked to see about renegotiation and we got this, this final offer here. The only thing that's happened in the time since we've got this final offer is, obviously, if you remember the last meeting, somebody came up and talked about, you know, um, us, Karen Lemmons and stuff, why weren't we out trying to market this and do this, assuming we weren't? And I can tell you since January, when we really started to hit the negotiation of it, we pretty much knew this was not going to fly as a park, open space. You couldn't, this is going to be a lot of money. We weren't going to get this thing for the value we did. It's going to be a lot of money. It was bought by the CRA. There's a lot of purposes you're supposed to buy land for the CRA for. And you're supposed to improve blight. And as we can say, a park or something like that would improve blight. It's better than the hotel being there. Is that the best use of the money at that price? And we knew from the start that we may need to, that the course of action, that whatever our special area plan that CRA said, would be to have control of that property to develop the west end of Tarpon Avenue. Not Karen Lemmons has been trying since she's got on several things, bringing hotel places. But one of the things she's almost brought all of them is looking at the Tarpon Inn, that area. And can you, can we bring something nice there? Can we bring back something like the old gondolier that you remember, somebody where people will bring their families in and come into town and stay? And I think the message is most of you, when you talk to Karen, either by phone or the meeting last week knows, it's a pretty consistent theme to what those developers are saying. As long as that place and sun place is there, nobody's going to come and develop and do it. So I think what we have to think on when we're doing this and we're deciding, is it too much? Is it not too much? Um, again, I think the main focus is going to be how we develop the west end of Tarpon Avenue? How we do that development? How we're going to someday get somebody? And again, this is not the only area. We got to deal with the development of the Tarpon Inn. Um, some of you in the short time who's in town talked to a developer last week. He couldn't get to all of you, but I know Karen filled you in by phone. By no means are we throwing all of our cards into one developer. But I think what this developer showed all of you and told all of you that there is an opportunity and could be an opportunity in the future, maybe not this one, maybe not that, but to develop and not only spur the development of that side, the, the Sun Bay side and stuff, but it could lead the, the redevelopment of maybe the Tarpon Inn later and that whole west end and make that whole end an oasis of our people to stay instead of the blight that it's been staying. So with this in mind, a little, at least one person who's talking about it, and I'm not, again, we're not saying that this is something that's going to come through or not. Um, I thought of asking the attorneys and the motel owner who I've, you know, who has worked with me, no matter what you say about them and them. He has worked with me and we've worked together all the time, to ask them to give us ninety days to look at this or some other things that we could show you before you made a decision of the more viable than just talking or a pipe dream or something. Some viable options of redevelopment, some vital options of not only getting some of the money back that we're going to spend for Sun Bay, but increasing the pop property values of all of our CRA. All of you know our CRA, what we got in property tax compared to the rest of the city. It was half almost. Um, so that value's low and we got to get it up somehow. Um, we think, and you know, I know I have faith in Karen, you have faith in Karen. You know, I think we can, you know, bring you something more concrete. If that's not enough what we brought you, that it has some possibilities to develop. And I just wanted to explore the opportunity, if we had it, you know, ninety days to do that. So when you make your decision, you've made this because a lot of decisions, been talking about all these other things to go on. I think the viable issue we need now is that property worth to invest in? So we can redevelop the west end of Tarpon Avenue, the west end of the CRA on our golden crescent and make something to increase all the values up and down. So they died late. You didn't get this to Monday because it was late Friday when I got the word that they would agree to the ninety days. Um, so that's when I wrote you Monday, told you about this other option. If you're not ready to put the trust in the process and trust to go out and take that property and do something with it now, to give Karen and myself ninety days to get you more information, maybe some concrete ideas of offers or something. It's not a long period of time, but you know, I think it's the most. In fact, I'm glad I was expecting them to give us less time to do it. They didn't. Um, so we could bring that forward. And as I said, I think the last meeting in January and the first meeting in February would be the one where you could bring this back. And on that added information, um, you can make the decision to buy or not to buy. And I think that would have all the information in front of you if you're not ready to make that stuff now. So, um, available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Licorice. I personally, uh, support to afford this item for ninety days. So you can plead you on negotiations. I think this is a positive move and we need to go along with that to give you the opportunity to bring back any development that is possible. But I, I need to clarify, this extension of ninety days will not stop the police to fully enforce the law to the, to, to the motel. And they will continue, we're going to continue to make sure that the building codes are, are, uh, you know, up to date. And I believe they already have completed everything on, uh, all the violations that they have. But we must continue to make sure that, uh, oh, they don't have any more codes on that, any code violations.
And that's fully understood.
Yeah.
It's been like that through this whole process of negotiation. So that's not going to change.
That's not going to change. Vice Mayor Panther, what's your take on that?
Yes, thank you. Um, you know, all the comments that I said, uh, two weeks ago still, still, still stand today. I'm in support of purchasing this now. Um, I'm, I, I am glad to see they came down some. It wasn't much, but some is better than, than, than nothing. It shows they're act, they're, they're acting in good faith. Um, there was a lot of talk last time about, well, this is a bad investment. And I mean this respectfully when I say this. I think that's more of just, you know, and I, I've, and I, I've been in these shoes before. When you're opposed to something, you find a reason to oppose it. You say, well, it's a bad investment. And like I said, I, you know, I, my family does real estate work on Tarpon Avenue for ourselves. And, um, I, I'm not looking at purchasing this property to flip it or to, you know, or to, um, revitalize this motel. I wa, I want to mow it down. In my opinion, we are, we are doing a, an, an, an investment here on a city level where I think only we have the ability to act to help solve this problem. And that investment is in the future of, of the west end of Tarpon Avenue. And finally, deciding that we will use CRA funds, not just between Pinellas and Ring, but for that, that whole district there up to the, um, up, 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 up to the bayou. So when, when I talk about, is this a good or bad investment? To me, it's not a matter of, let me see a balance sheet or a profit and loss statement on, on, on this property. Or let me see the rent rolls or what the hotel rooms can get or what can we flip it for? The investment that I see is the investment in the, in, 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 in the future of the west end of Tarpon Avenue and the safety of our residents. I know we've all been contacted numerous times by many people around there, uh, at least twice in the past few weeks by the owner of the nineteen-ten Inn. Well, obviously, she can't prove where they came from. Uh, she had some people that would typically be at the, uh, Sun Bay Motel or the Tarpon Inn and, uh, you know, approached some of her customers and startled them. And, and they actually asked the question, is it safe to walk in Tarpon Springs? And, and, and she couldn't respond, yes. I mean, if that, if that doesn't make you sit back for a second, even if you're in disagreement with this and say, is this a worthwhile investment? It should at least ma, 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 make you think. Because if I was her and I had them in front of me, I, I have the same question. Um, and I really do believe if we make this purchase tonight, that we will signal that, uh, we are committed to the west end of Tarpon Avenue and to its revitalization. Because no matter what happens, and I realize we have before us tonight a letter, a vague letter, if you will, about a developer. And my decision is not based on, 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 on this developer. And frankly, if my motion fails and you all want to go to this ninety-day thing, which I think is just, is just, is just kicking the can down the road further and, and just asking for more problems. Um, you know, I, I don't, nothing in there is going to change my, going, 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 going to change my, my, my mind. But what this signals to me is that we haven't even voted yes on this yet to, 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 to buy this property. And already a developer i- is interested in it. So that should help show that we are doing the right thing. We are being prudent with our CRA dollars, as Commissioner Carr so eloquently described in the last meeting, is to eliminate blight. And I really can't think of a better use on Tarpon Avenue right now to eliminate blight than to bulldoze the Sun Bay Motel. And, and again, for those that have talked about, we can't just shut them down. We can't just, you know, eminent domain for a public nuisance. Those things don't work. And to me, that's more, that's more draconian than forcing someone to, to, you know, sell to us. So, um, I don't wish to wait ninety days. He, he could change his mind in two weeks. Somebody else could die there. We have the Epiphany Celebration is going to walk right past there. I think I've had enough of, of their actions. I've had enough of wasting, you want to talk about wasting money, wasting police dollars, wasting fire dollars, wasting city dollars on, 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 on this property, that the minute they get a violation, they patch it up and it happens right again. Um, so I, I do believe i- if we purchase this tonight, that, 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 this is the first step in solving a big problem. Like many opposed have said, and they're correct, it's not going to be a quick fix. It's not going to be the instant one that solves all problems there. But it's the signal down there that we are taking, we are taking a very active step in solving a problem. We're not going to put up with an, an, another murder. We're not going to put up with, with, you know, drug paraphernalia. We're not going to put up with prostitution and crime right there at the golden crescent. And I have full faith in our city manager and Karen Lemmons and any of our staff members, not needing a ninety-day window to pursue options for us, everything from, we've talked about a green space to redevelopment. I have full faith in our staff to, uh, be able to properly market the, the, this property, bring us all the options. And we can then have a proper discussion without the heat of, do we buy or do we not? Of what do we want the future of this property to be? And that, and that's a very important question. That's a very important piece of land. And even those that might invite, that, 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 that might vote no to buying this, this, this property, I think they, 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 they would want to have a proper say in what that land is used for. Um, you know, and it's, and I guess as far as it's talked about, while this is taken off the, taken off the tax rolls, it's a minute amount. And trust me, even, even as little as a green space to a, 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 a new development is going to improve the values of, of these surrounding properties. It's going to improve the tax rolls because the values will go up. They can, they can only go up. And it's going to signal to, to the Tarpon Inn motel that, um, they can clean up their act, which they are slowly. But I think more so that's going to make that piece marketable for an investor to come in for a boutique hotel or some type of chain hotel that is suitable for, 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 uh, that amount of rooms. So that, that, that's where I stand tonight. I don't wish to wait any longer. I don't wish to kick this can down the road. I don't see a need for ninety days because my decision to buy this property is for the reasons that I've stated for a year and a half. And I have full faith in our city manager and Karen Lemmons to do the right thing and to market this property. So I, I will make a motion that we accept this offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Seber?
Yes, um, I agree, Vice Mayor, that we all want to see this motel mowed down. Uh, but it is not the only, uh, problem down at the west end. We have the problem across the street and at an X. apartments, as I've often said, where Officer Condit was killed. Uh, and buying this property, does that mean we will buy all properties that are blighted in our city? We have many more areas that are, that are blighted in our city than, than the Sun Bay. Uh, so I, I believe that we need to be fiscally responsible to our taxpayers. And, and our taxpayers should probably be making this decision and not us. Um, I've stated, you know, in the past that I do not believe that we should be spending this kind of money. Coming down fifteen thousand dollars, I think is a joke. Uh, we're still talking about over a million dollars. Um, I've talked to DPPR again and we have been doing the right thing as far as going after this motel. Uh, and, and that's what DPPR told me last Friday when I spoke to them again. It's code enforcement and the police department. Uh, we can actually go in and, and complain every day and, and somebody has to go out there and investigate. Unfortunately, as a business, Tallahassee's business friendly and they're not going to just shut something, someone down because we want them to. Um, and with motels, they only go out and inspect twice a year and they only inspect rooms that are open. So, uh, their recommendation was keep on top of it like we have been. Um, I don't feel that there's a rush to spend this kind of money without looking at other options. And I've said this in the past, we need to give Karen a chance. Uh, we need to look at other options. We don't have a plan right now. What we would do is spend over a million dollars, have an empty building there for a while. How would that stop crime and, and all the activity that's going on? It'd be like the days in on U. S. Nineteen that continue to have prostitution and, and drug activity and crime. Uh, so I don't think that having a hotel there until we tear it down and spend the money to tear it down and then have an empty lot where we are not collecting any tax, uh, from, from an empty lot and spending money to maintain an empty lot. So I, I just don't see the need to purchase this hotel and, and rush to that, um, judgment. Even though I want to see it gone too, but I would like to see the Tarpon Inn gone and I'd like to see other places gone in Tarpon. Uh, but that, you know, we just can't go around buying property. Um, and I do think that we need to stop and, and take a step back and not rush into this. And I know that Karen has been working with hotel developers for way over a year. Um, and it's, it's a matter of trying to find the right fit and, and someone who's willing to, to develop that, that area uh, rather than see an empty lot there. So my recommendation is still to, um, say no on, on purchasing this property and trying to, to work with our economic development manager to, uh, to develop that area.
Just to clarify, are you supporting that, uh, to give Mr. Licorice ninety days to complete this negotiation?
Yes, I was surprised that we were going to get ninety days because I thought that this hotel owner would want to take his money and run. It's a nice retirement, uh, benefit for him. Uh, so I, I appreciate that he did give us ninety days because I think that this will give us time to stay on top of this guy, continue to file the complaints, continue with code enforcement and the police department. Um, and hopefully, you know, have a, a solution and, and something we can come back with a plan to vote on.
To the end.
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Thank you. Um, I, I'm happy to see, you know, this, uh, new development, um, that's come before us. I did happen to meet with the, uh, gentleman or speak with the gentleman and Ms. Lemmons, uh, last week. This developer that want, that has some, possibly has a plan for this area. Again, like I said last time, we don't have a plan for this piece of property. And I think it's fiscally irresponsible to spend a million, twenty-two thousand dollars on this piece of property when all said and done. Eight ninety-five purchase price, forty-seven thousand to tear down. These are approximates, twenty-five thousand to make it a parking lot. And we're paying fifty-five thousand dollars in their attorney fees. That's a million, twenty-two thousand dollars for a piece of property we have no plan for. So, again, yes, I want to see something done down there. I, I honestly, honestly do. Something needs to be done. But this, the owner is giving us ninety days to see if we can have some sort of plan, have, um, something more, a little more definite. And, um, which I'm surprised he's willing to negotiate with us because fifteen thousand dollars coming down in purchase price, I think is a slap in the face. That, that's not negotiating. That's just, I don't know what that is. But he's playing games with us. Um, but, uh, you know, he is willing to go, to give us an extension of ninety days to see if we can come up with some sort of a plan. And, um, I know Karen is working diligently with, um, hotel investors and, and, and again, if, um, we were to purchase it, there it sits. Where, as somebody stated at our last meeting, where are the roaches going to go? They're going to go across the street to the other hotel. So this is, this is, that would be, purchasing it right now with no plan, I think is just a Band-Aid, um, for the situation. Um, and if you, if you are a business owner down there and you have people coming to your business, call the police department. That's what they're there for. They're there to handle it. We need to document any situation and build a case against this property owner, just in case this plan with this developer doesn't come through. So I would not support purchasing the property tonight, but I would support, um, the ninety-day extension at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr? Commissioner Carr?
Thanks. Uh, it looks like I'm in the minority again in this situation on the CRA board. Um, Mr. City Attorney, if you could just, I don't think we understand as a CRA board really what the CRA board is here created to do. Um, just explain to us again what the responsibilities of the CRA board is, um, so we all have clarity in understanding what that is.
I appreciate that Commissioner. We discussed this, uh, a bit at the last meeting. As we discussed, CRAs are, are created and designed, uh, to eliminate blight conditions um, within the designated area. Um, again, I, I stopped short of characterizing that as a, as an affirmative duty in as much as, you know, it concerns the purchase of property, but that is an enumerated, um, power of a CRA to, to do in order to meet that goal of eliminating blight, uh, and, and slim conditions. So that is, uh, a broad brush look at it, but that is essentially why CRAs were created and what their function is.
Thanks. Um, I, you know, I've heard multiple people talk about options. Again, we have other options, but I haven't heard of any other options presented. Um, I know last meeting we talked about some other options that are available, um, by documenting, but this will take you many, many, many years. Most likely I'll be retired, um, and moving on, hopefully with great grandkids, I think by the time this is documented. So all of us probably will not be on this board, uh, is my assumption. So it's something like this, how many more do we need to document? I mean, like a couple of other commissioners have mentioned on the board here. How long would this need to go on for documentations? And then my understanding is that judges don't want to shut businesses down too. Is, I mean, am I understanding that properly?
Uh, shutting this or any business down is a, uh, is a long, uh, drawn out process. It, it's, uh, for, for, for a judge, it's a nuclear option. Um, and we've recently gone through in Pinellas County, the experience of the Mozy Motel down in St. Petersburg. I can tell you that our situation here with this property and the situation with that property are very different factually. It's a long road, uh, relative to the Sun Bay before it's closed down. The other thing that occurs, uh, that can occur when and if a judge actually endorses the closing of a business, um, is that the city may be exposed to a suit and inverse condemnation, uh, which, which further exposes it to damages for having taken the property without the use of eminent domain or, uh, other legal means. And so, um, I'm not saying it can't be done. It's certainly legally possible, um, under these facts as they presently exist. No.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that for the board. Um, I just, uh, I want to state a couple of things. Um, so our appraisal came back as a city's appraisal, uh, six hundred and ninety thousand for the property. Um, their appraisal from their appraiser came back at one point five million. Um, I think it's pretty clear that there's many ethical laws that their appraiser, um, can't just make up a number um, and found other comps. But during mediation, uh, with our city attorney, the city manager and also our eminent domain attorney, they're able to come up with, uh, the purchase price. And then the reduction of the purchase price was down to eight ninety-five, right? So for the city appraisal, it's two hundred and five thousand dollars more. But when we look at the business owner's appraisal, it's six hundred and five thousand dollars less. Um, so I, I think that's a pretty good negotiations overall. And thank you for coming back and asking that, um, of the business owner. Um, fifteen thousand dollars isn't a slap in the face at showing the willingness to still work. Um, a slap in the face would be walking away and just saying to the city, giving his backhand to the city and saying, you guys had your opportunity, I'm walking away now. So I don't believe that's a slap in the face at all. I believe it's a gesture to say that I'm willing to work with the city still. That's an important part because this owner has been willing to work with the city for many, many, many years. Um, this has been a process that's been going on for many years of just issues after issues after issues. Um, as I mentioned before, it's a fertile environment for criminal activities to happen. I want to reiterate what the city manager said is the CRA is designed to remove blighted properties, encourage growth and redevelopment. This totally falls within our board's requirements of what we're required, what's tasked of the board to do. It falls in the realm of what we do. Um, we could look at some of the projects that the CRA has done in the past. We've got facade grants, which are great. It's helping investment in the downtown area, um, millions of dollars of reinvestment. Um, with this opportunity here, it's going to be a four-year payback period. Uh, I think that's rather short. We're going to have funds still for facade grants and other beautification projects that we want to do. Um, I would like to challenge all the board members that have said, I want to see this area cleaned up, but they're not willing to put their vote behind what they're saying. And that's one thing I want to challenge all the board members here tonight because this is an opportunity tonight to put your vote behind what we've been saying for so long. I'm the newest board member here. I'm very passionate about our town. I've, I was raised here as a young child and I chose to stay here throughout college and commute to USF and St. Pete College. And then I chose to buy my own home here after college. This is a beautiful town. A lot of people come here to visit and these are areas of town that people are looking up online saying this is, these are issues of drugs, um, terrible conditions inside of motels. I mean, this is not acceptable for the city of Tarpon Springs. So to wrap this up, it, it is our responsibility as a CRA to address this property. Yes, there's an issue across the street as well. We all understand that, but by removing this one property, this is going to encourage redevelopment and growth in other parts of town. And if we're concerned about property taxes, I believe Vice Mayor brought it up as well, is that it's going to increase the property taxes for everybody else in this area. Um, we're all passionate, it sounds like, to see these areas grow, but it's been many, many years since the West End of Tarpon Avenue has seen any development or redevelopment. And this is our opportunity to, to make that gesture to say the board of the CRA is willing to make that first step to invest in our own town to encourage redevelopment. And if we see redevelopment, like this has attracted one, um, developer so far. I mean, there's, this is one of two thousand different people probably throughout the country that have these development companies that develop boutique hotels, uh, retail doctors, offices downstairs with commercial upstairs. Uh, this is just an encouraging step, I think. To kick this down the road is not worth it to me. Um, I would say the blood would be on your hands. We have the Christmas parade. We have Christmas Eve luminaries on the bayou. We have Epiphany. We have many other things that go on. This is our busiest season of tourism. Uh, the people come down to the bayou, look at manatees and many other options. So it's up to you, us as the board to vote on this tonight, I believe. So I would second Vice Mayor's, um, motion to approve the purchase tonight of the property, uh, in question. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to clarify something here. Uh, I, I don't know if, uh, Ms. Lemons had the opportunity to speak to you about what she had before us.
Yes, I've talked to her about twenty minutes on the phone, not in person.
Because what, what we got here before is the possibility to develop the area, including the property of, uh, Hoffman. In other words, the whole corner. This is something that we want to do very desperately. I think it's going to change the whole area. And what Mr. Licorice is asking right now is ninety days of an extension to be able to negotiate and bring something forward to us because he has a developer that he's communicating with.
This wouldn't stop that though. It, it wouldn't, that could still move forward and other things can move forward. But the issue that we're dealing with today is removing a blight property in this area. Um, I'm completely for bringing other options and looking at redevelopment of other developers and saying, let's have a focus group and have ten different people come in and pitch their ideas. Um, bringing Mr. Hoffman, if he's willing to design some ideas. I think he has a, a design already currently in place. Um, yeah, so, yes, I met with, um, economic developer, Mrs. Lemons.
Okay, because this project includes both areas, I mean, both properties, Mr. Hoffman as well as the, yeah, motel.
I understand that, yeah. That, but that's what won't make a difference if we pass it tonight or not. It would still continue.
That was understood.
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you.
Mayor, I may real quick, if you're not.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I'll make quick, um, what I want to point out with this ninety day, I want us to be very specific about this. This was not brought by the city manager that he wants us to do this right now. This is an option, okay? Backup option, judging the temperature of, of, of the board. I, us purchasing this tonight does not negate anything. As Commissioner Carr said, if we purchase this tonight, it's going to be gung ho for Mark Licorice and Karen Lemmons to proceed with our options for developing this piece of property. Uh, us purchasing it does not negate that. In fact, I would even argue it spurs it more. And like I said before, um, that's going to be a very serious discussion. What do we do with this property? I don't, I don't, I don't take that lightly. I'd rather have that conversation with, I know two of my colleagues who are probably going to vote no regardless, where we're in an environment where we're not in a heated discussion about buying it or not. But if we do agree to buy it with your support, Mayor, that we then have to have, have the discussion without that hanging over us and then we all can fully commit to what are we going to do with, with, with this, with this piece of property. This ninety day extension is a backup plan that I just think kicks the can, uh, you know, just down the road. I, I don't think it's intellectually honest, and I mean that with the utmost respect to everybody on, on this board, to use it as a cover to further defer the side. We heard it two weeks ago. We heard it today. Now someone's defer it to January and I would, if I, if I was a betting man, I would believe the two strongest no votes on this board will still be no votes in January and I respect their decision. They, they, they may, they may, they, 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 they make good arguments, okay? So I don't see why it's necessary to further delay. Um, and I have a quick question for the city attorney. Um, could he wake up two weeks from now, sir, and just change his mind and just pull out?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I was not privy to the conversation where he offered the extension of the time. I would think that the, uh, the, uh, extension of the time, we put it in writing and have it be binding on, on both parties. So, um, as it presently stands, I'm, I'm not sure if, uh, the city manager has that, that in writing. So I don't know the answer to that.
That's, that's, that's why I, I don't wish to wait any longer. I, I, I really think at least two of the members of, 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 of this board who I greatly respect have valid reasons why, why they're opposed to this. I, I just don't see that changing in ninety days. I could be wrong. I'm, I'm not going to speak for them, but as I see it, I think we're just further kicking that can down the road. I, I don't want to wait ninety days and see what happens. Does he wake up and change his mind? He hasn't been respectful of law and order before, so I have little hope that would happen in the, in, in, in these ninety days. I think tonight, as we sit here, we're going to make the decision. Are we going to do what we are tasked with as a CRA to eliminate blight and purchase this piece of property or not? And not further kick the can down the road because I think that this is important to you, Mayor, that, that us buying it tonight puts this in jet, in, in, in like jet fuel mode for the, for the redevelopment. And just the fact that we had one developer sniff around on this, we haven't even voted yes yet. In fact, we actually voted no. Um, I can only imagine if we vote yes here tonight, at least by a three margin, what's going to come out of this and how many more people are going to come and do a, do a, do a, do a proposal? Because I, I, I just don't want to consider this one individual. This is just one of many, as Commissioner Carr pointed out. I'm not even considering that in my choice tonight. But as I said, it signals to me we're doing the right thing. Again, I think ninety days is kicking the can down the road. I think if you're opposed to, 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 to this purchase, and again, I, I respect my, 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 my colleagues that, that are, that's not going to change in, 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 in a ninety day.
May I respond to that?
Just a second. Let me, let me answer that real quick. I'm sorry. Um, because we have no plan, this is why I sent a memo to, uh, Mr. Licorice, and I'm sure you read it, all of you have, because you were, you received the memo, that I requested for, uh, Mr. Licorice to provide us options on users to develop this property and what will cost each option, as well as what's going to cost for the demolition. Some of the information, it was supplied to us. And, you know, you can't have, you can't do something without having a plan. You know, you, you're a businessman. Would you buy something without having a plan? Of course not.
Well, I, I.
You know, you, you won't do that. Now, the other thing is, uh, y- y- you mentioned anything about price doesn't mean anything. Yes, we have to be fiscally responsible as well, as well. We've got to do that as well too. We have to make sure all those elements are in place.
But for the record.
But now, but now, Mr., but, but now Vice Mayor, what we asking, what, uh, is proposing here by, um, Mr. Licorice is time for him to negotiate to bring a good project to Tarpon Spring. That's all he's going to do. And of course, we don't agree with it. That's fine. And you have something you want to?
Yes, um, I understand what you're saying Vice Mayor and I don't want to kick the bucket down the road either. Uh, but I'm looking at spending over a million dollars and that property being worth two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand. Who wouldn't want to buy it at that? Uh, I would rather see if we can come up with some kind of negotiation with a developer where we're not spending over a million dollars for a return of two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand from someone else who comes down, uh, the road and says, you know, sure, I'll buy this property for this because it's not going to be worth anything, uh, for that small lot. Uh, and we will have invested a lot of money. I understand what our job is as a CRA and I, I want all blight gone in the city, not only in the West End, but all over Tarpon Springs. Uh, but, you know, we have to consider that's not the only area that has blight. Um, and that is an important area to a lot of citizens and I also care about their safety. But we just have to be, have to be fiscally responsible, I feel. And I don't think that waiting ninety days is going to hurt us. I think an empty lot there, um, or an empty hotel is not going to get rid of, of what's going on down there. Uh, so, you know, we still have the property across the street and down the street and, uh, an empty lot may encourage even more people to hang out there. Homeless and, and, and drug abusers and whatever. So I just feel that we need to stop, take a step back, look at the plans, uh, listen to other developers and do the best negotiating we can do because I feel losing three quarters of a million dollars is not a very good negotiation, uh, on our part. So that's where I'm coming from.
Commissioner Kekka, you had something that you liked to add?
I just wanted to add, thank you. Um, I understand our role sitting here as a CRA board. I understand that. So, um, thank you for bringing it up again, but I do understand what our role is. Um, again, I don't feel as fiscally responsible to, to purchase, um, uh, this piece of property, which would be paying over a million dollars, well said and done, when we don't have a plan. I don't see the problem with wa- waiting ninety days. I spoke with, with the, um, developer and, um, what he's proposing, you know, and if, if, and if all parties agree, I mean, I think it's going to be a win-win for all of us. And, um, and then to insinuate that in ninety days, I'm still going to vote no. I want a plan. I'm not going to tell you which way I'm going to vote, but I can tell you, we have, we have a plan and I think it's going to be a good plan if, if all this falls through, comes through. This is great, it's going to be a win-win for all of us. So, uh, to say that, you know, the two no votes up here tonight are still going to vote no, that, that's, that's very unfair. Um, so again, I, I'm, I am not willing to purchase the property this evening. And I think we have to do, vote on the, the first, uh, motion that's on the floor.
I, I'd like to go to the public comments if you don't mind.
Sure.
Do we have any public comments on this item?
Get in line.
Mike Cuscootis, six two three East Tarpon Avenue. First, I have to, uh, uh, let you know that I am the property owner adjacent to the motel. I also own three other, uh, uh, business, office, office buildings in the city of Tarpon Springs on Tarpon Avenue and one on, um, actually where the city hall is over here. And I also recognize about the concern about using our tax dollars to reward a bad property owner, overpaying for a bad property owner. It's a bad idea. I pay taxes too. Um, but I ask you this. If this property, if this blighted property was on Tarpon Avenue and the trail, would your vote be different? If it was affecting your downtown business community, would your vote be different? Look yourselves in the mirror and ask, yeah, I would still vote no. When you look at, well, show us a plan, and I understand that, uh, having a plan, but the viability of anybody coming to town, would you vote to say, you know what? I want to buy this property if somebody said, you know what? I want to, I want to, uh, convert the Tarpon into a Best Western. Would you then say, okay, if that's going to happen, I'll go ahead and buy the property? Are you going to wait till that happens first? That's not going to happen. Somebody's not going to invest and open that door to look at that type of property for the, for the development of the West End until that property is gone. I've told you when I was here two weeks ago, I have talked to, to investors who would be interested in, in doing something. Not that they would or, or, or commit to doing it, but everyone has told me, Mike, if that property is there, I'm. Mike, if that property's there, I'm not even interested. And, and so, you know, I look at it differently. I, I, you know, um, the downtown business district has transformed over the last several years. Do you honestly believe that the downtown area would be inviting, the, the Sun Bay, if it was downtown, it wouldn't be an inviting place to be if it was downtown? Um, would people feel welcome to walk down the streets of downtown Tarpon Springs if that motel was in the middle of, of, of Tarpon Avenue? Of course they wouldn't. The development of the West End of Tarpon Avenue would pay benefits. First, the property owners and the nearby property owners, taxes would increase. That affects me as well. Um, and, and, and it would, like y'all said, and I think Mark, you said it right on point, and actually several of y'all did, this actually opens the door for opportunity for development of the West End. All your development has been sort of downtown Tarpon on the East End. Your prime property for, for, uh, it's prime for development is the West End of, of Tarpon Avenue. Okay? And to, and to get somebody to attract those dollars down to the West End, you need to get rid of that property. I took some notes, but one of the things that, that occurred, uh, last year, as many of you know, I, I'm responsible for the Epiphany Divers. I had several divers that, uh, families were from out of town. They actually checked into the Tarpon Inn. They didn't really like the Tarpon Inn, but they were there for that event. They checked in and they checked out. And they asked me if there was other motels, and I, I, I directed them to, uh, to, uh, US nineteen. And I asked, why did you leave? And they told me, with that, that hotel across the street, I'm not, we're not staying there, we're not putting our family there. So if you wanna improve even, even the status of Tarpon Inn, getting better guests to even go to the Tarpon Inn, you need to get rid of what's across the street. Um, there is a demand in Tarpon Springs for motel space. Especially, especially in the Sponge Dock or, or in the downtown area. We get a lot of tourists and visitors that come in, need a place to stay. You can attract an, a, 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 a chain if that place is there. You can attract a boutique hotel if that place is there. I think y'all need to consider that this is an investment. You're not just spending tax dollars unwisely. It's an investment because you will recoup these dollars and increase taxes. Probably you don't have to have a, a police officer sitting out there, uh, monitoring the, the hotel. That's, I think it's a waste of our taxpayers' dollars to have a, a, a police force directed at one, one location.
But is, would you please finish up?
Okay, thank you. Um, I think the city of Tarpon Springs would benefit by voting in favor of this. Again, nobody likes spending too much money, but sometimes you gotta look at the big picture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Todd Eckhouse, uh, eight twenty, um, Compass Circle, Tarpon Springs. Where do I start? Can I have fifteen minutes, Mayor? I'm just kidding. You have a situation, it seems to me, that the city has an appraisal, the, the city's appraiser says it's worth six hundred and ninety thousand dollars, right? And now you've got the seller saying that he's lowered his price down to what?
Eight ninety five.
Eight, eight ninety? Uh, two, roughly two hundred thousand dollars more? I would suggest that maybe, given, you know, the problems that that property has had, uh, that we know about. I mean, there, there's, I'm sure a lot going on that we don't know about. Uh, the question I would ask is, there's a cost, there's a price to buying it, but there's a cost of not buying it. And that's, that can be sometimes maybe a little bit more difficult to identify. I don't know how much, Chief, you know, the, the, the police department has had to spend in addition, if any, to, uh, look after that property over the last year or so. I suspect that they could have been doing other things other than that. And, uh, and it did cost probably additional, additional funds. So I would find it just so hard to believe that, that that extra two hundred thousand or three hundred, however you wanna look at it, wouldn't be spent anyway, okay? And then you wouldn't have the benefit of the ownership of the property. The other thing is, you have an advantage right now, a major advantage right now. You've got an architect that owns the lot in front of it, that overlooks the, the bayou. And Ed Hoffman has told me on numerous occasions that he has been, you know, been thinking about doing something with that property relative to an improvement. Uh, offices, condos, some, something. Uh, but he, the point is, is that he's willing to work with somebody on that. But he won't do it now because there's not enough depth. He needs that motel to be gone. And if that motel is gone, the chances are very good that he'd be very happy to go forward with, uh, with the project there. It could be, you know, a situation where you've got that prop, that front, his property totally occupied, not for sale, and you still have that motel there. And that, that makes it a, that, that exacerbates the problem. But if, that's not the case. You have an empty lot, and you have a, owned by an architect. That's a huge advantage right there. And I would maybe suggest, maybe this, maybe this is a little bit unfair, but I would say if, if, if you don't have a plan right now, whose fault is that? I mean, the commission has known, this has been a problem property for a long time. And it's been spoken of in terms of possibly purchasing it or attempting to purchase it. But why hasn't the commission taken the, uh, initiative to, to try to develop sometime a, a potential plan for it? I just think it's, it's very short sighted to say, over two hundred or three hundred thousand or whatever the number is, we're not gonna buy it. I just think that makes no sense at all. You have a lot of pluses right now. Not least of which is the fact that Hoffman owns that, that piece up front. And he's wanting to do something with it. Getting rid of this motel will give the, the property the depth necessary to do something significant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tommy Frain, six two four Penn Street, Tarpon Springs. Um, I've long, obviously, been against, um, the purchase, although I'm in full support of waiting the ninety days and seeing what happens. Um, I'm not, uh, someone, and I don't think most people who are necessarily against the purchase are carte blanche against the purchase. It's, we wanna have a plan. You know, it's really easy and flippant to say, oh, no, let's just spend it and it'll be okay. But, you know, it's not your money, it's our money, it's the taxpayer dollars. And I get the emotional side of it, even though I do take exception, Commissioner Carr, with you saying blood on your hands. You know, I walk my family downtown, so you're telling me if I don't support this, you know, I, I what? Don't want my family to be safe? So I really do take exception. I think that was pretty below par, in my opinion. But regardless, you know, I think that we can wait the ninety days. I don't see it as kicking it down the road. This rush to expediency, um, I think is pretty ridiculous. Um, I think that there, you know, when we get rid of this one motel, you know, I'm of the opinion, and I, and I'd love to see development, because I think that's the only way we'll solve any issue. So if we don't have a plan for de- development, nothing's gonna change with the Tarpon Inn. Um, and I, you know, I wouldn't use the term roaches, but those, there's people there. The people are doing the drugs. It's not the motel doing the drugs. You know, I live in downtown Tarpon. My neighborhood, at least in the couple blocks where I live, you know, we've had plenty of issues in the past. We have a, a house across the street where we had an entire family that didn't work and did pills all day on their front yard. All day, seven years since I bought the place. They finally just, you know, couldn't pay their property taxes. The house has been in their name for fifty years, forty years, whatever it is, and they finally have left the building. You know, never, never wanted across my mind that I think the city should come and, and buy this property. Now, the Golden Crescent, totally different situation, but the issue is the same. These are people. When they move from the motel, they're gonna move into my neighborhood, or they're gonna move across the street to the Tarpon Inn. So this grand, you know, vision that, you know, this is gonna be this, you know, quick, quick fix, we can just buy it and we can worry about the plans later. You know, I think it's fiscally irresponsible. Um, you know, I've, I've tried to keep my mind as open as possible to this. Um, but hearing a lot of the comments, um, tonight, you know, and, and just the, um, kind of the demeanor, that if you're not for this, and you're not for development, you're not for safety, you're not for all these things. I think that's really sad place that we've gotten to in this discussion. Um, and again, I'm in full support of waiting the ninety days. And if we have a plan, and you can tell me with my tax dollars that I'm paying on my property that I have, when I've lived here my entire life, ha- had my house for six, seven years, then I may be more confident to say, okay, let's go forward. But if you don't have a plan, you know, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna, you know, feel comfortable about writing you a blank check. You guys can make your decision, that's what you're elected for. Um, but that's my personal opinion. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Paulina Vasilagos, two zero four nine North Point Alexis Drive. Am I too far away? Can you hear me now? Okay. Um, I was pretty outraged with a lot of the stuff that I heard going on today. Um, some people in here have a total laissez faire attitude with the taxpayers' money, okay? One point two million is nothing to laugh at. And, um, rewarding criminal establishment is also nothing to laugh at. Because the bottom line to this whole story is, uh, first of all, I believe this issue should have been brought to the taxpayer. Not for the city to decide unilaterally. You have many tools for that. Put it in a referendum, whatever, okay? Second of all, I've been living in this town for twenty years, and I can tell you that by buying that dinky little motel, nobody's solving the problem, okay? As it was pointed out by both the commissioners right across the street, we have another huge problem, okay? I am not against redevelopment. As a matter of fact, I'm all for it. But you need to have a plan and a plan that works. The owner is laughing his way to the bank. Five, six years ago, we sold them that property for a ridiculous amount. He has called us repeatedly during the last eight months to get an appraisal from us what it's worth. And I can definitely tell you it's not worth the nine hundred thousand he wants to stiff the city with, okay? So, my point is, what is this big rush to decide? What is this big rush? Why don't we all come as a city together? Other people point, uh, pointed, Mr. Hoffman has a lot, maybe has an idea of what to do with that area. We as the taxpayers would be more than interested in hearing any plan, and please put it to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Athena Tsardulius, six thirty four East Orange Street. Uh, mine is short and to the point. I support the purchase of this property tonight. Enough is enough. I want the city to send a signal that we are concerned about the safety of our citizens, and we are taking action now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Commissioners, and Mr. City Manager. Anita Protas, nine oh one Bay Shore Drive. Five years, and you can hear it on the tapes. I've been speaking about the motel and the Golden Crescent. Five years. That lot, Mr. Hoffman's lot, had been, has been empty for much longer than that. And when all the, I went home last meeting, through all my notes and listening to the tapes, the plan was to come back to the city with the price of the hotel and Hoffman's lot to negotiate and bring it all in a package. That hasn't happened. Last meeting, start hearing about the motel property, and then Mr. Cuscutis comes up and says he's been talking to Mr. Hoffman about development and plans and things. What's going on? Now we're gonna put a motel, and Mr. Hoffman's gonna do something with his. What happened to the plan to bring both properties all together at one time? When was the decision made? It wasn't made at a commission meeting to divide them. So now, tonight, we've come with the final amount of money. You look at other communities, they buy properties and bank it to improve their cities. Look what Dunedin's doing. Look what Safety Harbor's doing. Look what Clearwater's doing. But Tarpon Springs is gonna wait. Are you gonna take one developer or buy it and open it up and see what other developers are gonna bring to you? That's how you do it. If you don't buy it tonight, you're not gonna buy it in ninety days. And how do you know that developer's gonna give you the best? You open it up and let other people come in and show you their plans, and they will come. Once you own the property, they will walk through the door. I've seen it, I've sat there, and I know what they will do. It happens. Mayor, you've wanted something good down at the docks, it didn't work out. Now's the time to do what to make it work out. Ninety days isn't gonna make or break it. Tonight is the night. And if you don't buy it, it shows that you have no consideration for your community to go ahead. We're missing another opportunity. Look at how many opportunities Tarpon Springs has lost through the years. They didn't want Point Alexis, but they got it, and look what we've got out there now. They didn't want the green development. They didn't wanna ruin Sunset Hills. Look at the beautiful homes we have there now and the fine citizens in this community. Your Golden Crescent is in your hand. Tonight is the night. You either make it tonight, or it's gonna die.
Thank you.
My name is Andreas Salvaras, four ninety five Riverside Drive. I wanna ask a question, Mr. Panther, and Mr. Carr. Why are you in a hurry to sell, to buy the property? You say you have development. What's your name for the development? If it's development, they love this property, he can go to buy myself to spend one million point two, not the money of the city. The other thing I feel tonight, the drug dealers, they control us. They tell us what they have to do. They tell us. I don't think so it's fair. Like before, the commission seal said before, if they close the place, they can go across the street. Why wouldn't say to the owner, spend half a million mon, half, spend half a million dollars to fix a better first class? So that people, the, the dealers is not have no place to live. But unfortunately, we are attractive. All this business, which is not necessary with the other cities they want to. Why don't we have an Escondax? Any class, the, department store? I heard somebody say about Dunedin, we have to go to see what are they doing there? We have to see it. We're talking about Tarpon Springs, one of the best city, beautiful city. No place else. But we wanted to sell, to buy the property. For what? We don't have nothing. Where's your plans? Where are your plans to do that? No plans. I buy tomorrow, maybe, maybe some development is come to us to say, you know what? I'm buying now the property for half price you paid for. Why the development, Mr. Panther? They don't come direct to go to the owner of this, of the building to say, you know what? I paid for some million dollars. Why they don't? Because they're gonna buy for nothing. City, city to pay and the, the development pay for nothing. So I wanna agree with the mayor this time and the city manager to wait for ninety days. You have plans, and you have development, you wanna develop the property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jack Spurk, two thousand and eight Golf U Drive. Um, I've spoken in opposition before to this. Um, I would love to see development in the West End of Tarpon Avenue, and I think that that will eventually happen, one way or another. and I think that that will eventually happen, one way or another. But I really feel like if we take down the Sun Bay Hotel, those guys are just gonna move right across the street to the Tarpon Inn. The problem will persist, so we need to come up with a better remedy than just purchasing a property for an exorbitant amount of money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Collier, Circle Drive. I'm not here to scold you. I'm here to congratulate you because I can remember way back in the day when five elected officials bantered back and forth about what they believed in. And everything I've heard tonight, the five of you believe in that, okay? The end to that, I hope I'm not the only one that was counting out in the audience, but there seems to be three votes, from what I've heard, that this is gonna be delayed for 90 days. And I personally think that's the right idea. The plan that everybody's asking about is, is to get rid of that hellhole over there and provide the health, safety, and welfare of the public, and that's what your job is. Personal feelings can't come into it. This is a unique situation. Nobody's going across the street to tear that place down as long as that hotel, motel, is there. You know that. Nobody's gonna buy all that property and try to develop it with a drug place next door. Your choices are basically being given to you. You're split tonight, I understand that, but I want you to think about something. Two wanna buy tonight, sounds like three wanna give it 90 days. I've never heard a vote of three yet to buy. And I've been listening to all these meetings. So, what happens if you don't buy it? And that's what I'm gonna ask you guys to do, hopefully, if this passes for 90 days, to think about for 90 days. You have some strong opinions, and I respect your opinions. I'm glad I heard what I heard tonight. But the ultimate question is, what are you gonna do if it doesn't pass? You've still got the same problem. Does C.R. Money still gonna be there in the blighted area? Which, in my opinion, is not downtown. Downtown's doing just fine. So, there's another side to this story. What you want is one thing, what you have to do is another. I think Commissioner Banther, you made an excellent, excellent point tonight, okay? I really do. I hope you make that same point in 90 days. Because if I were sitting there, I would have to wait 90 days because it's worth the wait to see if somebody really is gonna come in. And that may not happen. And what do you do if you don't have three votes to buy? That's what I want you to think about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam Glett, 1033 Rose Tree Lane. Listening to everything that's been going on tonight just absolutely blows my mind. Everyone's sitting here saying, "A bad investment. A bad investment. A bad investment for our future, for our kids." I just built, actually, I've lived here for now 16 years. Bought a house, sold it, decided to build a custom home here in Tarpon Springs to raise my family. Two weeks ago, I was walking around, and I was approached by a guy, asked if I wanted drugs or if I wanted to buy some kind of watch on him. All tattooed up, white shirt. First time in my life, I reached for my gun that I had on me. I can't, my wife doesn't even feel safe. Going back to that hotel, why? Why would we wait? What's the point? It makes no sense. It's our future that we're looking for. It's an investment for our future, not an investment as in our pockets. We have the money. Use it. If we don't use it, it sits there. If we don't do anything about it now, it sits there and creates more problems. You're saying that we don't have a plan? We do have a plan. The plan is to buy it, then to make a plan, another plan. It doesn't just take one plan to make it perfect. You have to have multiple plans. Start somewhere. Start now. Because if you don't start now, what are you gonna do? Just gonna sit here and watch it? Have the police department take all their time up and look over it? I'm sure they're tired of going there and making calls. I mean, I know I would be. It doesn't make sense. Start something new. Bulldoze it. If you do that, it's gonna attract people to, okay, well, listen, we're making a change. That's the problem with Tarpon Springs right now. We're not changing enough. All these other cities are all changing. Look at Tampa. Tampa's growing so fast. Look at Clearwater. Look at Dunedin. Look at Safety Harbor. Look at Tarpon. We have to start making change. If we don't, we're gonna be in the same spot that we are today. I mean, I know I wanna raise my family here. I know I wanna walk around that bayou. I know right now, if I had my children, I wouldn't walk around that bayou right now. Why? You know those guys are out there. How many of y'all have kids? And how many of y'all would wanna walk around that hotel right now? Anyone? Would anyone wanna walk around it? No, I don't. No, I won't. This is an opportunity to make change. That's why that fund is in place, to do this. Why are we sitting and waiting? I just, it blows my mind. I've been paying taxes for years. My vote's all the way. That's just one more step to make the city better. We have a great city, and we're sitting back. We're waiting for something to happen. We're waiting for a plan to fall out of the sky. Go make that plan. Work together. It's not gonna happen. You need, that plan needs to start today by buying this piece of property. It's that simple. It really is. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
514 Ashland Avenue, Peter Delakis. Couple of things that were said tonight that I wanna extrapolate on. If we've got all these people interested in developing this property, why are they not going directly to the property owner? As Andy had mentioned earlier, because they can get a good deal from the city. You're gonna spend 1.02 million, 1,220,000, to buy the property, level it, put a little parking lot for a developer. Now, if you look at real estate, a vacant lot does not have the same value of a hotel. So, when we go to sell it or whatever to a developer, what are we gonna be able to return on it? We're gonna get our 1,002,500 back? No. Now, let me refresh a few memories. We cannot rely on developers giving us promises. All of y'all, y'all know what's behind the Ace? And the, what's the ice cream place? The Dollar General and the Tarpon Drug? What's behind there? Banyans. There's four units connected on one little townhouse. They promised us 62 townhomes. They tore out tons of trees. I don't know how much we got in thousands of dollars in tree money. And what have we got eight years later? Empty promises. You want a more, better reminder? How about the Forbes property on Tarpon Avenue across from the property we got to put in the driveway and the bathrooms? How long have we been looking to find somebody to develop that property that the CRA owns? And you're gonna rely on a promise from a developer, possibly? You want a bigger one, a promise of development? Mirrors Crossing. How many times have we had that change? They've gone through bankruptcies. They promised us a medical office building tying to the hospital that we have all this development. Where is it? Where is it? You're gonna spend over a million dollars for a property that you won't be able to sell for that on a promise of possible development? The whole promise of development is that the investor looks at it, well, you know what? Maybe they approach Mr. Hoffman and the Sun Bay, and they buy it. Or they find some way to co-do something. That's what it's about. We cannot rely on Karen providing you some magic plan. And contrary to what the gentleman out there said, excuse me, hey, you in the blue shirt, you asked about the money. The money is coming from a loan from...
Mr. Delakis, you're talking to the board.
All right. The money to educate the public, the money isn't in the CRA. Y'all are planning on the next agenda, if you buy this, to borrow money from the city. And as it's been mentioned, why don't we allow the citizens to have a point of view on this? There is no referendum. You can, as a board, ask to be put on a referendum. You can do that. And let the citizens, all these different people have had their opinions, so put it out there. Let the citizens have the choice and give them all the facts. But buying this property, spending over a million dollars, is not going to solve your problem. And if you had, as Commissioner Seber said, an option, as the Department of Professional Regulation, who handles hotels, what to do? And yes, it is a use of our code enforcement and our police department to act this way, but if that's what necessary to get them to comply, then that's what they're there for. And it's not a waste of resources to do that. But at this point, if you wanna give yourselves 90 days, that's fine. But to be honest with you, I agree with Commissioner Banther. Just vote it down now, though. Just vote on it right now, one way or the other. But vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Do you have any other public comments?
Hello, I'm Donna Andreas at 652 Bay Shore Drive. I've been on both sides of this. I'm very physically conservative when it comes to spending money. It seems to be an overpriced property. You know, doing the comps on it, you think, wow, they're just gouging, you know? Be reasonable. I guess they can't be reasonable because they let criminals hang out where they're in their place of business. In the meantime, though, we have the Christmas Parade, Snow Place, Lambeth, Epiphany, crowded events that I attend every year. I actually moved into Tarpon Springs July 21st, 2015. Three weeks later, that's when they raided both hotels and arrested a whole bunch of people. So, I do see the idea that the problem at one hotel is just gonna transfer to the other one. This price point gives me pause because if we spend this much money on the little property, and then the problem moves to the big property, they're gonna want five, six times as much to get rid of the next problem. Have you looked at the Blight on Lime Street? There's a business for sale. It's been there for sale, God, I think probably 10 years now, at least. And my husband and I looked at buying it, but we looked around the neighborhood, nope. Can't invest our money in a place where it's not gonna have a good return. So, this property, though, is not gonna have a good return for anybody at any time. We're gonna end up suffering the consequences of it being there. Long-term, when it's my kid that gets pulled in, saying, "Come here, let's buy some drugs, little girl. Come here. Hey, you know, $5, $10." That's the kind of place it is. I don't want my kid walking around that neighborhood, which is not going to. The park's across the street. The park is across the street. I mean, you see them hanging out at the library. You see them hanging out on Hibiscus Street. But that's where they start from. And if they're gonna go across the street, we're gonna address that next year, the year after. But in the meantime, buy a property that's gonna cause a problem and make it go away? It's kinda like buying a broken car. Do I really wanna buy somebody else's problems? Well, you know, for the future reference, I'm still gonna be able to fix it and get a transportation. So, this car is gonna be fixed up, and eventually, we'll drive it down the road. It may not be this year, next year, but if we buy it now, we've saved some money because things go up in price. If we wait till next year, he's gonna want twice as much money, maybe, because the problem be twice as bad. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Here, none? Well, we heard from the people. Some are for it, some against it.
Well, there's a motion on the floor. Can we vote on that?
Right.
Would you repeat the motion?
That was Vice Mayor.
Your motion?
A motion to accept the offer.
Go ahead and buy it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Yeah, there's a second already.
You have something to say?
I do. I just wanna advise you, I've been over here, you guys sometimes test my Roberts Rules knowledge, and it's always interesting to me. You have a motion on the table to buy the property, and you've got a second. Hearing the discussion, there is some support, I think, or at least I've heard some discussion about postponing it for 90 days pursuant to the city manager's memorandum. I just wanna advise you, again, I don't take positions on things procedurally, though I wanna let you know that if you proceed to a vote on the motion as it's presently stated, and that vote fails, you will have determined the issue conclusively.
I'm sorry, you can determine what?
You will have determined the issue one way or the other. Okay? So, if there's a majority vote to buy or a majority vote to not buy, that majority will carry this issue. You've not moved for deferral, you've not moved for postponement, okay? So, if there's a flavor to do that, my suggestion to you would be to motion now to postpone this till a date certain. That motion would need a second, and that would amend the motion on the table.
I make a motion to postpone.
You can't do that.
She can do that.
There's already a motion on the table, so the motion on the table has to amend it, doesn't it?
No.
That's my understanding, isn't it past meetings?
No, the motion belongs to the body. It can be amended, so long as it gets a second.
I'll second the motion. But can we be clear?
However, before you do that, your city manager and his October 16 memo gave you two options. If you postpone, you're going to need a date certain. So, he's giving you two options on January 23 or February 6. My suggestion would be to pick a date certain and see if that amendment's...
Mr. Attorney, I have a question. This is the first time that this has happened in my four and a half years on here. So, I made a motion to purchase. I understand what you're saying about that that choice is definite, and in my view, it is. We have a second. So, is now my motion overruled because Commissioner Seber motioned to defer 90 days? And there's a second?
Yeah, functionally, the way it works, and Roberts Rules has a chart of motions, and so certain motions take precedence over other motions, including, number one, the motion to amend the motion on the floor, as well as a motion to postpone to a definite time. Action on the base motion. And so, unless your rules of procedure speak to this, they don't. Our rules of procedure then defer to Roberts Rules procedurally. So, yes, I know we don't do this a lot. Thankfully, this issue doesn't, this type of thing does not come up a lot, but that is the proper application of Roberts Rules.
So, the second motion is the one we're gonna have on the floor?
And I would have to add a date, like February 6?
You need to add a date, yes.
And your date was?
February 6. Is that one of the dates? I'm sorry, I didn't...
Yeah, January 23rd and February 6. So, functionally, what that motion is at this juncture, which has received a motion and a second, is a motion to buy the property. Action on the motion to be postponed to...
February 6.
February 6 of 2018. That is the motion on the floor.
Okay, and I will second that.
I'd like to amend the motion if...
Somebody else can make another motion?
Well, let's hear it, and we'll see.
Amendment to, if this motion, we could add to, if it receives three no's, that the purchase of the property is followed through tonight. So, the first motion was to delay the purchase, but if it receives three no's, it would be purchased tonight then. but if it receives three no's, it would be purchased tonight then.
No.
Why wouldn't that be?
Because you need an affirmative vote to purchase the property. You wouldn't be having affirmative vote to do that. You'd have a negative vote to postpone.
So if you have three no's to the motion, then it would go back to a second motion.
I see where you're going, Commissioner, I appreciate it. I'm gonna caution all of you that this could go on all night. Okay, we could do that forever. I don't think anybody either sitting at this desk or sitting in the audience wishes to go through that. I understand what you're saying, but no, that does not result in a default of a purchase of the property. It results in a declining of the motion to postpone this matter until January twenty-third, or, excuse me, February sixth of two thousand and eighteen.
Then what happens after that?
Then we're gonna need another motion.
Can't we just vote on the first motion?
So now we have a motion and a second?
So then you'd still have, if that happens, if you have a motion to postpone and it's not, and it fails, you need another motion because the item is still before you for action and has not been determined, and it's been determined that you don't wish to postpone it. Now, that doesn't mean you have to act on it tonight. It only means that that motion failed, and so I'll go back to my original caution that you could do this forever. I won't dissuade you from doing that, but I just, you know, wish to remind you that that's what could happen. I don't think it's going to, I don't think you will, but it's not gonna serve anybody to get into motion play. I bring it up only because of what I've heard happening tonight. I wanted to make sure you were procedurally informed.
Can I make another comment? I know everyone else had a second time to have a comment.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just to clarify, these are all CRA funds, although we're taking a loan out of our Stormwater Fund. This is all being repaid back by CRA funds over the next four years. So yes, it's being proposed to be purchased by strictly CRA funds. Another thing, this has been going on for the past year, so we've been working on this for quite some time. This isn't a, just on a whim, decision to do. Also, tonight, we're sitting at the CRA Board, but the Board of Commissioners voted to invest in our fire department of less than seven hundred thousand dollars for a new fire truck. We also invested in our sewer system and water lines, just under a million dollars in our sewer lines. These are investing in our towns. It was also mentioned that there wasn't a plan, but yes, there is a plan. The plan is to purchase the property for redevelopment, encourage redevelopment and growth, and remove a blighted area. So there is a plan in place currently, right now, with what's being proposed to the board. So I think that answers a lot of the questions. And then a resident brought up the blood on our hands. It's not on the residents' hands, it's on the board members and the board members that choose to delay this. It's not on the city residents, but this is an issue that we have to realize, this is a safety issue. And that this is something that's a very important topic to address tonight head-on instead of kicking it down the road.
Commissioner Carr, I appreciate that you are emotional right now, and we all are. But we don't have any blood in our hands because we here serve the people of Tarpon Springs and we're here to do the best thing to do. We all have the same love for Tarpon Springs, and I don't appreciate that at all. And I'm sure a lot of people don't. But what we're here today is Mr. Licouris came and before us, he brought the possibility to have a developer that will combine both properties, the motel, the Sun Bay motel and Mr. Hoffman's property, to build a motel. That's the possibility that we have.
I'm not comfortable with one person.
In my opinion, I think we should give him a chance to take a look at that.
The idea is incentivize a developer to come here. And that's for the purchase, but to just say going with one developer isn't prudent, and that's not fiscally responsible. What we would discuss in the board is fiscally responsible.
I think we are.
Can I get the city attorney to explain? I just wanna explain one more time because I had my fresh refresher on Roberts Rule of Order. So, and I'm trying to go back to listen and all to understand this unique circumstance that comes up. I'd just like you explained again about the fact that if we had procedures in place, we'd go to either procedure. If you don't have procedures, you default to Roberts Rule of Order. I think I don't wanna go out here and have the next week people calling in, how did two people make a motion? And then somebody can jump in and counteract that motion. Just one more time, as basically as you can, so we don't have the calls all week for the citizens. The Roberts Rule of Order, which I understand we have to do because we don't have a procedural thing to the otherwise, and why a vote can overtake an original motion, another vote. I think we need to get that clarified, and I think I know the answer, remember my class, but I don't think people in this audience, I don't think people understand. If I hadn't took that class, I probably wouldn't understand it either, again, to refresh myself.
Yeah, and I truly do appreciate that. And I'm not gonna sit here and tell you I'm an expert chapter and verse on Roberts Rules of Order. I'm not. Functionally, what it is, the issue is handled by Roberts Rules this way. Roberts Rules has a table of motions, and they are in order of primacy, if you will. So one trumps two and two trumps three and so on and so forth. And there are, you know, primary motions and incidental motions and et cetera. The motion that was made to purchase the property sits below, in this case, a motion to postpone, right? So a motion to postpone can, if you will, not take precedence over, but work with the prime motion to move action on an item, if that is the will of the body.
Mayor, can I address Commissioner Carr real quick, please? Obviously, you and I are on the same page on this, and I appreciate your passionate comments about the blood on the hands, and I'm not in disagreement with you. I realize that can be interpreted in different ways. But I wouldn't worry about it at this point. If something happens there, and I pray to God nothing happens there in ninety days, or what I believe will possibly be never at this point, the public is well aware who was in support of buying it tonight and who wasn't. And that just speaks for itself. So there's that just in there because it is evident tonight that you and I want to buy it tonight and the rest of the board wants to wait. So it just is what it is, and I pray nothing happens there. And tonight's a mute point and we go on about our way. But I wouldn't worry so much about that because it's on the public record where each of us stand tonight.
I think we had enough comments, we think?
I have no comment.
Any other comments?
Can I just get clarity of Roberts Rules? Again, I'm relatively new at this. Last meeting, I made a motion, when a motion was on the table, to approve the purchase, when the motion was on the table to not approve the purchase and go back to renegotiations. Since that wouldn't be considered a postponement, that wouldn't be considered the next motion on the table then? Because I was told that I couldn't make that motion at that time. I'm just, I mean, I could use a one-on-one on this, I think, afterwards. We could connect this week, but I just wanna have some clarity while we're here.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that with you. And again, procedurally, with an issue this large, unfortunately, my computer has died, so I've been trying to, you know, do some memory. But, you know, certainly from a procedural standpoint, with an issue that has generated this much input and sort of, you know, gauging the way that it's unfolded over the last several months and especially tonight, I wanted to be, I don't recall your specific motion from the last meeting. I go to a lot of these meetings each month, and so I don't always have an encyclopedic recollection. I'm happy to have any discussion with you about it. And moving forward, I'd rather that we not get into, y'all do a very good job, generally speaking, of making motions and seconding them and moving our business forward. But again, I wanted to make sure with this issue that all your options were procedurally laid out. We don't do that every time because we'd be here all night, every night. It's just, it becomes unwieldy with rules of procedure and Robertson, the whole thing. But relative to this issue, I felt it was important that we opened that door.
So again, we have a motion on the floor now that we can vote on and is to postpone it for till February sixth, two thousand and eighteen.
So it's a motion to postpone action on the motion to purchase.
Okay.
Can I second it?
And we're clear, right?
No, but we gotta vote on it, so.
Do you have a question?
No, I know.
That's a roll call.
I know what's going on.
A roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Chair Banther?
No.
Chair, who's this?
Thank you. Well, that concludes the CRA meeting. It's adjourned at nine oh eight. And we now go into the special session meeting. I now call to order the special session meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on October seventeen, two thousand and seventeen, at nine oh eight P.M. And we have no item to discuss at this time, so the agenda has been completed. And we go to staff comments. Chief?
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
City Attorney?
No comments.
You have enough? City Manager?
One thing I wanna say is the cemetery will be open tomorrow. We've cleared, I think, again, that's been one of the issues we've taken the most heat on. But you gotta remember, when we were clearing parks like Craig Park and the Sports Complex, you'd go up in them trees and drop the dangerous branches on the ground because you had ground below. Obviously, in the cemetery, you can't take branches and drop them because they're gonna fall and damage graves. So what people can't understand is, we got the other parks open fast because most of them, you could cut and drop. These almost, in some cases, have to be surgically brought down so they can't cause any damage. So it's not slacking, and I know we've taken the heat, but they have worked feverishly to get that open and, you know, we did limited for safety. But again, we couldn't have the conscience when we know all those trees were unsafe, the limbs were unsafe, the chance of somebody being in there and one of them falling on them, it just, you know, it's worth taking the heat more for that than the sun were to happen. But the crew at the cemetery and the tree crews that we brought in have been working hard, and we feel we have it to the safe point now. We didn't damage graves. We didn't do that doing that. So from my word and where they were this afternoon, we should be opening the cemetery sometime tomorrow. There may be a few places blocked off, a few corners, but in essence, the cemetery will be back open. That's one of our major places that hasn't been open, so that's gonna be tomorrow.
Right.
Thank you. Can I say a comment? No comment? Vice Mayor Panther?
Yes, thank you. To dovetail off the conversation with cleaning the bathrooms at Craig Park and tonight for the motel issue, I took my daughters to the playground at Craig Park after dinner on Sunday. Aldous thinks she's a movie star and went up on the stage to go sing and play, and it was littered in drug paraphernalia. So I have some pictures that I can show. I think I took a picture. But if we could be more proactive in cleaning up that area when we work on the scheduling for cleaning the bathrooms, because I don't want those bathrooms to go back the way they were, which was nothing short of like a Sun Bay motel bathroom. So we need to make sure we're policing all areas there because it was nothing you'd want your child near or anybody near. Thankfully, I ran up and got her before she touched the items. Second off, I had my first orientation, or my orientation at P S T A with Brad Miller. Express to him my concern for transit in North County. And he is gonna be, we're gonna try and work on some, having a transit town hall here in Tarpon Springs. It'll be my goal to have one as well in Oldsmar and in Safety Harbor. My first meeting is next Wednesday, and I'll keep the board up to date as the meetings progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kik?
Thank you. First, I wanna thank Vice Mayor for posting on Facebook about debris pickup and whatnot. It's been very helpful. I know a lot of people have been asking me, so I'm just letting you know. I'm passing the information along to you, so, and I just keep driving around when I see something. I will definitely pass it on. You're giving the information to Mark?
Yeah, Mark monitors the status.
Okay, but I appreciate that because it's been a slow process, I know, and we're all hearing about it. So anything we can do to move it along really is helpful. Also, there will be a solar information meeting here Thursday, November ninth, from six to eight. And it's something new. It's a co-op concept to put solar in your home. So I urge you, if you wanna come out and learn more about it, go on social media. It's all over social media right now. Do we have it on our website?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. I think it's something you really ought to look into, putting solar in your home. We get a discount. I think we're gonna have plenty of people that will participate. They're looking for two to two hundred and fifty people. I think we're going to have that. So again, Thursday, November ninth, from six to eight here in the auditorium, there will be some representatives and they will talk to you about this co-op that we are trying to put together here in our city for solar. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Seber?
I wanna thank you for your comments on Craig Park. I visit there and I live right around the corner, so obviously I am in favor of doing something about the west end of Tarpon Springs. So thank you. Yeah, we do definitely need to make sure that's cleaned up. And something I found out the other day from someone talking about transportation is that there's free taxi service to doctor's appointments for seniors. I didn't, I just realized that.
Through DART, yeah.
So, you know, I know we've talked about transportation and helping our seniors, and this lady said to me, oh, I'm going to the doctor for free with a taxi. So I'm like, oh, well, I didn't.
There are some agencies that they offer that right now, and we're going to we're going to provide that information to our senior information center. But it's not, I think it's just temporary. But also, they have another program that's called DART, but you have to, it's for disabled people. They have to qualify in advance to be able to use that.
This lady plays tennis three times a week, so I don't think she's disabled. But I was thinking that would be, yeah, great information for our senior information center.
But we're still, and our Vice Mayor is gonna be working with us to come up with some kind of a transportation for the seniors here in town, where they can actually go to the doctor's office, to the grocery store, to downtown and do their shopping and stuff like that.
If they can get a free taxi, that's even better.
Uber is the system that we're trying to work with, will be, you know, be funded by the P S T A. Will share the cost.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. I wanna say thank you to all the residents that came out tonight on both sides. It's important to hear from all citizens. We get phone calls, we get emails, and it's great to have public comment. I think it's an important part of our service here at the city. We're not doing this for ourselves. We're doing it to represent the town and to hear good, bad, and different, or whatever it may be. I wanna encourage individuals to keep coming up and sharing your thoughts and recommendations to the board and myself. Welcome your phone call anytime, as long as I'm not sleeping. Also, would like to ask the city manager to look into, this is hearsay, I'm not sure if this is happening or not. It's my understanding that the individual might be looking at relocating the hair salon on Mr. Hoffman's property. I would like the city to start looking into a satellite police station to put in that piece of property where that building sits today. As we can see, this is an issue that we're not going to be dealing with right now. So I think it's important to show the residents, to show tourists, and to show all the business owners here that the city's still putting their best foot forward to discourage crime in this area and to show that it's a safe place to be with police representation. So if you could speak to the property owner, I believe it's Mr. Hoffman, and find out if that is true. Like I said, it's just hearsay that I heard that she was moving. I think it would be a neat opportunity to show a good faith during this time that the board decided to delay this process and could potentially discourage from some of the activities that are going on around the area. Again, we have a lot of great small businesses in Tarpon Springs. If I can encourage you all that are watching online and the audience to spend time in our town, SpongeDucks and downtown areas, and shop local. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I also like to thank everyone for being here tonight and providing the input, and we heard so many different opinions, and I appreciate that very much. I have several announcements that I'd like to make. On October twenty-first, we have a recreation drug and trade Halloween pass at eleven A.M. at the Community Center. October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, down at the SpongeDucks, we have the Arts and Crafts Show that's starting at ten A.M. October 28 and 29, down at the Sponge Docks, we have the Arts and Crafts Show that's starting at 10:00 AM. October 28, we have the Holiday Safety Festival at the Loews. That begins at 11:00 AM. This is a free event and it's hosted by the city and the Loews Home Improvement. November 2nd, we have the Sunset Beach at 7:00 PM, this is the last one of the year. November 3rd, we have the popular event, the First Friday on Tarpon Avenue, that begins at 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. November 4th, we have the Antique and Treasure Cell at the Amir's Parkilla that starts at 9:00 AM. November 4th, we have the Assistant Series Annual Fila Competition at the Craig Park that begins 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Also, it's going to be a demonstration how to prepare a cover mouth, which is the meat of the sponge divers they used to do. And Sunday, November 5th, we have the Maritime Gathering at the Sponge Docks that starts at 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Again, I want to thank everyone who's been here tonight. And well, that concludes the special session and the time is 9:19. Good night, everyone.
I think it might be ordered, but...
Yeah. Thank you so much.